Pursuant to Section 8414-11 of the Nebraska statute, notice that this meeting was given at December 12th, 2014. Pursuant to Section 8414-11 of the Nebraska statute, the next regular board meeting, Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, January 5th, 2014 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room at Teacher Administration Center, 3215 Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of Board of Education at the Administration Building during the regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statute, the public is hereby informed that a copy of the current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the Board Meeting Room Wall on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fay. Gadding.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Present.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Eight present.
Next we'll move to... Next we'll move to E-School Spotlight. Mr. Andrews.
Mr. President, thank you very much and happy holidays to everyone. We have two school spotlights tonight. First, it is of course the season of giving and we have dozens upon dozens of OPS school buildings at all levels doing everything from raising funds for digging wells in sub-Saharan Africa to food drives. And this is exemplified best perhaps by Ponca, whose 150 students have already filled 40-plus huge boxes of food for the food bank here in town. Tell us more about it. We have Principal Jennifer Leclerc with us. Please join me right now in welcoming her.
Hi, we're so honored to be here tonight. Thank you for having us. I'm Jennifer Leclerc. I'm the principal at Ponca. But I have with me tonight several of our student council members and staff members. We've had a lot of fun over the last two weeks with our food drive. This is the first year that we've had a student council at Ponca. And so one of the things that they planned was a Spread the Joy canned food drive. And so over the last two weeks, students and parents have been lugging in bags and backpacks and bags and backpacks full of canned foods. So although we have 150 students, we like to say we're very small and mighty. Our student council has been busy over their recess times collecting the canned goods from classrooms, sorting them, boxing them, and we're proud to say that we've collected over 3,000 cans in two weeks and filled 50 boxes. So we're really excited. This has been really good for our students and I think that they would agree that it's... We've talked a lot about how doing good for other people makes you feel really good too. So we hope that this is the first of many of the things that we get to do for charity. And to continue the spirit of spreading joy, we have a little treat for you tonight to say thank you for all of the things that you do for Omaha Public Schools. We know you give a lot of your time and energy to supporting us in the building. So thank you very much. Go ahead. (Applause). Does anybody get one up? Mr. Scanlon's on a diet.
Excuse me, sir. I think he wants two.
(Laughter). Is there an extra one?
Thank you for all your hard work and passing on joy to everybody. That's very important as we move forward as a school district and as you move forward in life. So thank you.
Shall we hear it for Ponca one more time? (Applause). Second school spotlight this evening is North, which is celebrating the grand opening of a very high-tech classroom thanks to Samsung Electronics, which has provided some very cool new laptops and also tablets and other computers. That's Tom Dickey, who's the finance teacher there, can tell us more about. Mr. Dickey, if you'd approach and please join me in welcoming him.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thanks for allowing me to come in tonight. Some of you saw the presentation last Friday morning at Omaha North. We had a number of business representatives from the National Academy Foundation, from Samsung, from Verizon, from SOTI. All came together because they believe in our program in Omaha and they believe in our program being successful. And that's in part not only because of the students at Omaha North that are in the academy, but also with John Vinchaddle, Mr. Gene Haynes, and Rob Dixon. Let's give them a hand for their help with making this program successful.[382.62][382.62](Applause). The overview of a video I'm going to show you guys here in just a second and the audience really in-depth what this program is about really shows the belief that Omaha North has with the success that this program is going to be there. And real quick, I have Christian. He just came in. He's coming from work. He's in the video, but he's going to share just one thought on how e-learning technology has changed his education, his opportunity to grow, and then we'll watch our short video. But here's Christian Hope.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to say how e-learning has helped me, you know, with school and how the technology has helped me, you know, do things more conveniently. And well, I guess I'll start with, I mean, the Samsung tablets are pretty cool and doing like the stock exchange through them while we're in a circle in a class so we can go over them real easily and talk about them and then, you know, think, you know, come up with ideas of maybe better trades or... And it's all group effort and it's a lot of... A lot of communicating.
Thank you, Christian.
Yep.
For the audience as well, one thing to think about during this video is these students that started off this school year had no idea that technology was coming our way. The only people who had the concept or idea were Rob Dixon, John Vinchaddle, and Gene Haynes. We worked together behind the scenes for three months. We were the fastest, most efficient school district in the world. That came straight from Samsung at our post-meeting to get this job done. It took time outside of the classroom, evenings, weekends. John Vinchaddle, Rob Dixon, and I, we didn't have a summer break. We were on the scene working with these guys to get it done. So while we watch this video, you'll see that Mr. Haynes, the principal at Omaha North, believes in this, the students, and some of our business partners like Woodman of the World Insurance and Wells Fargo also believe that education takes place beyond the classroom. And sit back, watch this three-minute, 30-second video to your left.
More and more, you're not seeing the hard copy of a textbook because by the time they get it published, get it out to the young people, it's already outdated. So now we have to be on the cutting edge of technology. And as building principal, I want to have the best opportunities for all the young people.
E-learning has impacted the way I teach by allowing students to be more engaged in a classroom, use modern technology, and extend the learning environment beyond the doors of a building and in a classroom to the world that surrounds them.
So usually we sit around the table like a big family and then we get on our tablets and we kind of, you know, just go through our stocks in class and we just talk about different upcoming events and how investing and putting in stocks should be almost like a priority.
E-learning has changed the way I learn. It makes them more easier and we can come to school and take more classes because they're online and I think that is better.
E-learning has really helped me because I feel like anytime, anywhere, I can access what I need to do online and get my homework done pretty much anywhere.
SOTI, Samsung, and the National Academy Foundation have allowed the environment in our academy to become more well-rounded and give the students in our academy a more competitive edge with those that they will be graduating with in this year and in coming years.
E-learning has impacted my grades because whenever I need to turn in something, I can have it right there. I don't have to go to a computer or I don't have to charge up my computer at home to do it. I can just do it on a tablet. It's really easy. It's really convenient. I can do it almost anywhere.
E-learning has impacted my grades by helping me build access to anywhere, get things done without having to worry about turning things in person.
If I have a question, I don't have to stay after school and ask the teacher. I can just email them or text them and that makes it warm.
This individual school is a cornerstone for this community. And understanding the culture, the dynamics of this community and the community which we serve, you know, it's very, very important. You have to have a passion and you have to have a pulse on what you adore and how you get things done.
And finally, our last word, I believe, is the most meaningful. During that video, I don't know if the board saw, I just grabbed a tablet and I passed to these young people behind us. It's the same way I brought the technology into the classroom. I took out the 40 tablets that Samsung provided us. We displayed it on an 80-inch interactive display board. It went through a hotspot. It went through a server. That was all provided by Samsung and now it can be used anywhere in the district. And these little guys behind us, whether they're going to go to Omaha North or any other great OPS high school, have now have the ability to be more advanced and on that competitive edge. So not only do we thank the partnerships that we work with, but we also thank the Board for having the right people in the right place at the right time to give our students and our youth the competitive edge that they need. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next we'll move on to our Board and Superintendent Communications. We'll take a 30-second to a minute recess while some of the younger kids and families move out. I'll reconvene the meeting at 6:47 PM.
Moving on to F1 Superintendent's Report, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few updates. First off, thank you to all the Board members who participated in our Gold Lunches. Those are the schools that scored high on the NISA assessment in the three areas. And by the way, there's a new display back to my left. If you look behind those glass cabinets where they identify the schools that have received honorable mention, silver and gold, and that's a fairly recent update that the Communications Office did. So thank you, Mr. Andrews, for that. But just some way of recognizing our schools that are going above and beyond. And again, we continue to see improvement in our state achievement scores as well as, in this case this year, our ACT score. So congratulations to those schools. Thanks to the Board for participating in the recognition luncheon for the entire staff because it takes the whole school, not just the teacher, not just the principal, but actually the whole school to create that culture of learning. A couple of other updates. There's going to be an article in Ed Week. They've interviewed and met with staff in the district regarding the EDs of school support and how we're supporting our principal development. I expect that we're going to have quite a bit of... I think they even had a photographer here too. So I think we're going to have some pictures as well as a pretty in-depth story about what we've done this last six months to 10 months, how we're transitioning and what the goals of that program are. And I know the Board's been highly involved and supportive of that, so I thank you for that. It should be a great article. Next, I'd like to also mention that at your table you had a book, the David Karp book, The Improbable Scholars. David Karp was the author who was recently in Omaha, was sponsored by Moak and UNO. So I wanted the Board to each have a copy of that. Thought that might be something of value for you to have. Also wanted to mention that congratulations to Katie Underwood, one of our Board members who you may have seen in the newspaper recently. She was promoted in her job. So it was in the Omaha World-Haired. So congratulations, Katie, on that recent promotion. And finally, just a thank you for everybody who's been a part of some pretty challenging times in the last month. I know I've been personally a part of two funeral services for our young people and I know many of the community and the school staff and some of our school board members also have been a part of supporting our families, the school families, as well as the families of some young people. So I appreciate everyone who's been a part of that and thank you for your support of all the families. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any Board communications or reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to Treasurer's Report.
Mr. President, Board members, the November 2014 financial reports are available for your review.
Thank you, Dr. Poole. Public comment. First, we have Mr. Ray Sonberg, First Responders Foundations... Foundations, sorry. Please come up, state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
Ray Sonberg, 14916 Miami Street, 68116. Thank you for allowing me to speak briefly. I am the President and the Executive Director of the First Responders Foundation, and the mission of our foundation is to enhance public safety in our community by providing resources to firefighters and police officers and to show appreciation to our first responders for their dedicated service. Some interesting information that I'm sure you're not aware of, I certainly wasn't. A police officer or officers are dispatched to an incident 240,000 times a year. That's once every 2.2 minutes, 24/7/365. A fire department personnel respond to 10,000 fire alarms and 32,000 medical calls a year. That's once every 13 minutes, 24/7/365. So I think that's underlies... underlines the appreciation that we feel that all our citizens, including our students, should show to our first responders. And that was the heart of the Thumbs Up Initiative, which is a... was created by our Board member, Ron Brodkey, and he'll talk to you about the Thumbs Up Initiative. Ron?
Rob, please state your name and...
Ron Brodkey, 13712 Hickory Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144. I'm here to tell you about the Thumbs Up Initiative, and every one of you tonight became an ambassador of the Thumbs Up Community. To be an ambassador of the Thumbs Up Community is to live up to the standards that are written in the certificate. And that is to go home and talk to your kids and talk to your friends and talk to your relatives and pursue the thank you through the Thumbs Up Initiative. That means that every time you see a policeman or a fireman in a truck, in a cruiser, in uniform, at Bag &amp; Save buying groceries for the fire station, if you see them on horses at the ballgame or in the old market, those are Thumbs Up ideas. Whenever a fire truck passes you on the street, roll down the window and give them a thumbs up. I guarantee you almost that you will receive two blasts on the air horn or you'll see thumbs coming up out of the truck or you'll see the lights blink. And they... they wanted you to know that they appreciate what you're doing and how you're doing it. We appreciate our policemen and our firefighters and we work hard all day, but do we worry about anything at night that's a problem? Do we... When we go to bed tonight, do we have to worry about our fires in our house, our police protection? No, we don't. But we take it for granted. We take those policemen, the firemen, for the work that they do and for what they accomplish. And we get very little appreciation we're showing. So the Thumbs Up is the idea, the initiative that I put together to get Omaha to think in terms of being an appreciative community. We have 4,400 miles of streets and roads in Omaha. We have 750 to 800 firemen, about the same in police. They do a great job. They do a great service. We don't thank them enough for the things they do. If you would be with me at Assembly at Picott School, for instance, this year, I asked the kids in the gymnasium, there were 350 of them maybe, I asked the kids, "How many of you..."
One minute.
"...have a mother or a father who's a fireman?" And a couple stood up. And I asked, "How many of you have a mother or a father who's a police officer?" And a couple of them stood up. And I said, "They miss a lot of the things that go on in life for you, don't they? They miss soccer games. They miss all a lot of things that happen that they can't be at during the day because they're working and during the night because they're working. And sometimes it's three and four days that go by that you don't see them."
Thirty seconds.
"But they're there protecting us." And I want the rest of the room to understand, and I want all the kids in the building to understand, that these kids sacrificed a lot to have a mother or a father or a brother or sister or relative in the police-fire department. So along with that thinking, I thought it'd be pretty simple to just put up the flag and say, "Let's give a thumbs up," and all the city of Omaha would rally and instantaneously would be a big hit and Omaha would become the city of appreciation, not the city of brotherly love or the Mile High City or any of those other kinds of cities. But all of a sudden, we are the city who shows appreciation. And I thought that'd be really simple. But what I forgot about was that Matt explained to me that we're bell-to-bell curriculum.
Mr. Brodkey, that's time. I'm sorry.
And when we are in that mode, the teachers really don't have a lot of time to spend talking about appreciation or showing appreciation or finding out who the kids... Tell the kids what they really mean by, "What is appreciation to you people?" If a teacher came in on Friday morning...
I'm sorry, but we have limited it to five minutes and your time is up.
Bye.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work you do.
Comes up to every policeman, every fireman you see. That's it.
Thank you again. Next, we have Mr. Chris Prou. State your name, address. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening. Chris Prou, P-R-O-U-L-X. Address is 4202 South 57th Street. Here representing the Omaha Education Association, speaking to... on your action items on the agenda related to the trustee's appointment. Just want to urge the Board to follow through and approve the recommendation that'll come before you later this evening. There's going to be a very highly qualified candidate to serve as a trustee. And part of what I want to speak to tonight, his qualifications, what we're really looking for as a future trustee is somebody who really understands well what their role is as a trustee and what it isn't. And I think we have an individual who really understands that as a trustee, what we're asking from that individual is to understand how to vet the financial advice that they're being given as a trustee, not to actually have to go make those financial investment decisions themselves. That's why the trustees hire out and they contract with a lot of different financial advising companies to make that advice. But we need our trustees to understand how to read those reports, how to vet that advice, how to go about hiring and if need be, hiring new or contracting out for new financial advisors. But I think you have somebody in front of you this evening to be recommended and to be approved that it'd be very, very good for all the employees in our district and would do well by all of us. So I urge you, please, approve that recommendation when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Ian Garrett. Please obviously state your name and spell your last name, your address, and you'll have five minutes. Mr. Ray will let you know when there's one minute and then 30 seconds and when your time is up.
Okay, my name is Ian Garrett. You spell that E-A-N. Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T. And my address is 1340 Park Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. Good evening. Once again, my name is Ian Garrett and I'm the founder and chief innovation officer of Infinite Aid Institute, L3C, as well as a Board Member of the Bryan Center and Mad Dads of Omaha, as well as a communications liaison for the Lauren Coalition, an advocacy organization for school of choice. My organization, Infinite Aid, focuses on education and social innovation. We currently are working with two clients who are actually charter schools, specifically ProDale Academy in Minnesota, as well as Guadalupe Educational Systems in Kent City, Missouri. We've come in support of the draft revolution concerning opportunity schools. As you know, nationally, there are varying types of charter school authorizers from local school districts to nonprofits and universities. But among these types, what is emerging as the best practice according to the National Association of Charter School Authorizers are statewide independent charter boards. The strengths of an independent charter board come from focus and scope. Because their only job is to charter and oversee schools, and because of that, the Board can develop the best, most equitable way to do that job quickly, efficiently, as well as effectively. So far, 14 states have independent charter boards. According to the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, according to the principles and standards, the ideal practice is to provide charter applicants with at least two authorizer options in every jurisdiction. Ideally, an independent charter board would have the ability to take applications directly and not simply upon denial by the local school district. Two of the highest performing charter districts in Louisiana and DC, according to the 2014 Health of the Public Charter Schools movement, actually follow that independent charter board model. In conclusion, we would recommend that at this particular stage, the Board consider sanctioning an independent authorizing board outside of the present board on behalf of Omaha Public Schools, as well as consider supporting a future independent authorizer in line with national best practices, the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, and the top two performing charter school districts in Louisiana and DC. And please note that we applaud your resolution and your foresight regarding the prospects of charter schools in Nebraska, and we hope that you guys will consider our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Next, we have Mr. Willie Barney. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, address. You'll have five minutes and Mr. Ray will let you know when five minutes is up.
Good evening. Willie Barney, 105 North 31st Avenue. And would like to, first of all, I haven't been here since the bond pass, so I want to say congratulations to the Board on a two-to-one passage of that bond. congratulations to the board on a two-to-one passage of that bond. Very important, some of those initiatives that were identified years ago, and improvements in the schools that needed to be made, to see those included in that bond in North and South and West Omaha, so we congratulate you on that. Also, at the last school board meeting I did attend, there was quite a conversation about the project management, and I just wanted to, again, congratulate the board on making small emerging business a top priority with that. I can tell you that the community is definitely watching. It's a very important opportunity for us to create contracting opportunities for those businesses, especially in North and South Omaha, that have the highest level of unemployment and poverty in the state. So we really appreciate the board's attention to that, and I've had an opportunity to briefly interact with Gabrielle, who's leading that initiative, and very impressed with what she brings to the table, and we look forward to partnering in any way that we possibly can to make sure as many contract opportunities as possible are generated in North and South Omaha. So we thank you for that focus, and we ask you to accelerate the rate to make sure that those contracts, or even the initial ones, are engaging small emerging businesses. In addition to that, just want to say, in looking at the data, which we always look very closely at, we introduced last Saturday our State of North Omaha report, and also State of African Americans, and just wanted to bring to the board's attention, if you haven't seen it, in one of the schools outside of North Omaha, the Crest Ridge Dual Language Program, 92% of African American students at that school are proficient in reading. 92%. It's one of the highest levels I've ever seen in the district. So tremendous success at Crest Ridge. Miller Park, I think it's 84% of the kids there are proficient in reading. I also want to bring something else back to the table. I think this is my fifth year coming to the board, and we have a wonderful partnership that we've developed with the district, with our summer jobs program, with the North Omaha Cradle to Career. But one of the things that we took on with the district about four years ago was the Focus School and keeping the Focus School open. One of the reasons we kept the Focus School open was that it has been proven to be a highly effective model. It's extended day, it's extended year, every student has a laptop, leadership, communications, and technology. You invested in that initiative, it's proven, and I can tell you that 80% of the students, 80% of the students of all races across all socioeconomic groups at that school, 80% are proficient in science. 80% are proficient in science at that school. 80% of the students are proficient in reading. One of the things that we have challenged the district to do is to look at implementing an extended-day, extended-year school in the heart of North Omaha and make it a neighborhood school. You have invested, you have the teacher contracts, you know what it takes, you know how much more it takes to do it, you know what the investment level it is. I'm not sure why it's taking so long to take that model and replicate it in North and South Omaha, but we would encourage you to work with the school, with the community, with the teachers, and we will roll up our sleeves with anyone else that wants to really implement an innovative model that has been proven. You have the data, you have one of the best models in the entire state, where you have 80% of the kids are proficient in science. 80%. It's one of the top performing schools in the state when it comes to that. You're doing something that should be replicated with all deliberate speed in North Omaha. So we encourage you, we're ready to work with you on it, we need to see this model in North and South Omaha as soon as possible. Again, I want to congratulate the district on the tremendous success of getting the bond approved and the improvements that are being made and will be made. I encourage you to stay focused on that small emerging business, to make sure that those contractors have an opportunity, not just an opportunity, but we want to hit some goals with that. And I challenge you again to look back at some of those schools that are really hitting it out of the park, and the incremental, not just the incremental change, but really the revolutionary change that's happening at those schools, why we cannot wait until 2016.
One minute.
We need to make sure that an innovative model, like the Focus School, like a neighborhood-based extended-day, extended-year model, is implemented in 2015. This is our fourth year. You have the data, it's your model, it's proven, you have the research, it shows it works. Let's make this thing happen in 2015. We'll do everything that we can as an empowerment network, the community partners that we can bring to the table.
Thirty seconds.
We want to work with the teachers and really make this thing happen in 2015. Let's not wait another year. Let's make this happen. Thank you so much for your time and your investment.
Thank you. Any more public comment, Mr. Ray? All right, moving on to consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Godding. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Godding, second by Ms. Williams. Any abstentions? Sina and Roll Call.
Snow.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Partis.
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to, at my discretion, I did rearrange a couple of the agenda items, so first will be economics and financial literacy on the information item, followed by the human growth and development, then the 75 North Project.
Mr. Wayne, members of the board, we'll be presenting an information item about some curricular changes we've received requests for, and then we'll be coming back to you in January, February as an action item. Presenting that tonight, we'll have Mr. Delane Havlivic. He's our supervisor within our Division of Secondary Education Curriculum Instruction Assessment. He works in business, marketing, and information technology for our high schools and middle schools. And then co-presenting with him tonight is Mr. Barry Thomas. He also works in the Division of Secondary Ed in CIA, and he is responsible for social studies, our supervisor in that area. They have some community members and teaching staff here tonight as well. They'll introduce them during their presentation.
Good evening. As stated, my name is Barry Thomas, and I am the supervisor, excuse me, supervisor of Social Studies for the school district, secondary division. What we would like to present to the board this evening is information in regards to a proposal to split the current economics and financial literacy course into two separate courses, one being economics and another one being personal finance. The change would be from a one semester economics and financial literacy course, I would call your attention to the presentation on the screen. I was planning on going and standing by the presentation, but the clicker is not working, so I'm going to kind of stay close to home here. So hopefully, we can maneuver ourselves to where we can follow along on the presentation as well. But nonetheless, the current one semester economics and financial literacy course is a mandatory course taken by sophomores for graduation, one of the seven social studies courses. What, again, we would like to do is propose to split that course into two separate one semester courses, one, again, being economics, Introduction to Economics, and then the second being a personal finance course. This split would begin in the 2016-2017 school year, provided the approval of the board. To be very specific, the graduation requirements for our school district, the 49 courses or 49 credits that students need to take in order to, or, excuse me, to pass, in order to graduate, will not be changed, would not be changed at all. What we are looking to do is, we're looking to take of the 17 elective courses that are mandatory for graduation, we're looking to replace one of the 17 elective courses with the mandatory, with a mandatory personal finance course, dropping the electives from 17 to 16, and keeping that extra course now, or I should say, added course to replace the 17th credit. Our current graduation requirements, as stated, will not change, and just to reiterate, our current graduation requirements are the most rigorous. The 49 credits that our students in Omaha Public Schools have to take and pass in order to graduate are the most rigorous of all of the metro area districts. The history of the economics course, as is currently being taught, in 1999, Introduction to Economics was brought before the board and added as a graduation requirement. In 2008, an additional financial component of financial literacy was added to the Introduction to Economics course to create the current Economics and Financial Literacy course. The reasoning behind that was there was a call or a response to the Great Recession of 2007, when the stock markets crashed and we had a lot of subprime mortgages. We wanted to make sure that we were sending our students out prepared to take care of themselves financially, so we added some of these financial literacy pieces within. It was also a response to the, to call, excuse me, to a call from Omaha Business Community Members to teach financial literacy, and then also personal finance. As a result of that change, was eliminated as an elective course in the business department. So when we brought in the financial literacy, the personal finance standalone elective course was then taken out of the course catalog. Since 2008, when we made our change, the State of Nebraska also, in 2011 and in 2012, made changes to the state standards for grad, excuse me, to the state standards for economics or for, I should say, for social studies, as well as for business, adding their own personal finance and financial literacy components or standards within. We are hitting those social studies standards, as well as those business standards through the Economics and Financial Literacy course. The practice of offering, what we're trying to propose, is a change between the current course and the two separate courses. That is a practice that is used statewide. There are 170 schools throughout the state that are currently using or teaching personal finance, and 121 that are currently teaching Economics, Introduction to Economics course. The rationale behind this discussion, it's been a lot of conversation since 2008 about what we could do to better serve the Economics and Financial Literacy course, but most specifically, what we would be doing by separating the courses, students will be able to take either an Intro to Economics or an AP Economics to fulfill graduation requirements. Also with that, the current OPS Economics and Financial Literacy course has nine standards, and separating the courses will make the, excuse me, separating the courses will make this comparable to the number of content standards found in other courses. The typical social studies and business courses contain four to five standards, again, whereas the current Economics and Financial Literacy course has nine. Finally, the new course of Intro to Economics will be accepted by the NCAA Clearing House as well.
Good evening. I'm sharing the stage tonight with Barry Thomas. My name is Delane Havlivic, and as Dr. Kerber said, I'm the supervisor for business and marketing in the career education division of Omaha Public Schools. One thing I'd like to point out for rationale as well is that we've had lengthy discussion and support from our teachers on this very topic. We've been encouraged to consider adjusting the structure of economics and financial literacy. We've gathered input at curriculum meetings, at curriculum day sessions. We've discussed this with counselors and with building leadership. With us tonight, I'd like to introduce two individuals that could answer your questions if you have them later. I have Kelly Means right behind me. She's the department chair for business, marketing, and information technology at Central High. I also have Renee Gokenhauer. She is a business and economics teacher at Benson High Magnet. Again, both of them are very passionate about what they teach, the subject areas they lead, and could share input on this particular course, you know, with you if you have questions as well. Also, we've had discussions with members of our business community on this very topic about personal finance education and the need for it in our community. With us tonight, I also have Mrs. Amy Shaw. She's right there. And Amy is with the Nebraska Credit Union League, and Amy also serves as a member of our advisory committee for our Academy of Finance program, and Amy would be very happy to answer any questions you have in connection with financial literacy education in our I'd just like to summarize some of the benefits, benefits of making this potential adjustment. One of those such benefits would be the expansion of personal, of advanced placement enrollment. If you notice on the chart behind you or to my left, the items noted in blue are items that align with our OPS strategic plan, so we've highlighted those for you as well with the number of the plan that they align to. So in addition to the advanced placement items, this also provides alignment with national and state economics and personal finance standards. Again, both of those standards have been revised in 2011 and 2012, so we want to make sure that we're meeting both state and national standards that are at the best possible level that we can. I had mentioned this response to the teachers' request for change for economics. It reduces the content standards to a comparable number, and the fact that we're dealing with so many standards with two combined courses, we'd have the focus on the two courses equally now with the time that's allowed there. And finally, this is approved by the NCAA Clearing House as an economics course for the core areas. The benefits of personal finance would be the expansion of dual enrollment. There are several state standards that are available for personal finance dual enrollment courses, and we have opportunities with our local colleges to offer a standalone personal finance course for dual enrollment. That's another opportunity that we could provide to our students. It increases opportunities for our finance industry partnerships. We have members of the financial community that have so much to offer, resources, that we currently would like to add to our personal finance curriculum as well. This would, again, respond to the teachers' request for change, and it also expands opportunities for career education pathways. With that, we currently have, there are currently six state-approved pathways in finance by the Nebraska Department of Education. There are four currently that Omaha Public Schools meets in that finance pathway. By having separate courses in economics and personal finance, we would be able to meet all six of those pathways the state has defined, so it would increase opportunities for students planning for career and technical education careers. And to sum things up, we thank you for listening to the discussion on potential change on graduation requirements. Please know that this would begin by impacting students with next year's freshman class, the class of 2019. That would involve economics being offered to all students for the first time during the 2016-17 school year, and also to sophomore, as sophomores, and personal finance would be required for the first time to all students in the 2018-19 school year during those same students' senior year. And from there, I can take questions, or we have our partners here as well with us this evening.
Any questions, board? Mrs. Godding.
First of all, I want to say thank you so much. I have a child taking AP Economics this year, and as always, I'm extremely impressed with the social studies department in OPS, the quality of the programs that we provide. And so as I watched this, I was glad to see that you could either take the intro or you could take the AP course, which, for some kids, that would be a good thing. AP Economics is not something that everybody thinks about taking. Will we be able to expand AP Economics in the high schools to more than one course opportunity, or is that the plan, I would assume? Because sometimes you have to have enough kids to sign up, and I think that's, I mean, that's the way it was for my child this year.
And that is one question that has come up already, actually one of the reasons why we brought this to the table tonight. We've had questions from our counselors and some of our high schools asking that very question, that if they could take AP Economics versus Economics and Financial Literacy, that that might open the door for them to take that AP or AP courses in economics.
Right, so just thinking about ramping up
Right.
For that, I think that's really important to think about. The other question I have is on the personal finance course, will that be offered as a regular and an honors-level class, or is it just one offering?
We have a great opportunity for dual enrollment personal finance course.
Okay.
And that would likely be offered as the honors-type course, and we still have some arrangements and, I guess, an agreement to be determined yet with the community college or the college that potentially would offer that.
Okay.
But there is a great opportunity for honors-level work in that course as well.
That's great. So thank you so much, because I know the business community has made comments to me about the personal finance piece, and so I'm glad to see that we're adding that to the curriculum, or will be, hopefully.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a note, I know our dual-credit classes, I believe we've doubled our number of dual-credit classes in the last year and a half, and I think that's a goal of ours to continue providing more opportunities, whether it's personal finance or others. We're really focusing on that. We've met with MCC and all the staff there and continued to work with them, so I appreciate Barry and Delane also, working with all the rest of the staff in curriculum instruction. Just an editorial comment, I always share this, that I think it's a good course, I think personal finance and the separation of the two is good. It's always a struggle for me, sometimes it seems like K-12 education is responsible for everything that happens, and I really don't think we caused the 2008 recession. And I recognize that I've had some folks say, well, people bought homes they couldn't buy, and those turned into derivatives that then became problematic for the whole subprime mortgage system, but I don't think it was a K-12 responsibility. But I still think the course is good, so I'll make that one editorial comment and then just leave it there, but I think the course is good, and we'll bring it back for action in the near future.
Any other comment? Sina, thank you.
Okay, we appreciate your time.
Next, we have, as I said, we rearranged the agenda. We're moving originally I-1E up to I-1B now, Human Growth and Development Curriculum Update. Dr. Kerber.
I'd like to start by thanking the board. We said this in May.
I'd like to start by thanking the board. We said this in May. This has not been a topic in front of a Board of Education for a potential full curriculum update in nearly 30 years. So the fact that you entertained it in May, you're interested in an update now, and that we'll be coming back to you with more updates, as noted in the timeline, is deeply appreciated, with our ultimate goal of updating our curriculum. I'd like to introduce Dr. Karen Spencer-May is going to be leading us off with other colleagues, I think Michelle as well. And I'd like to quickly let you know who's here. We have Michelle Zeig, and she's with the Women's Fund. We have Brenda Council. She's also with the Women's Fund. We have Erin Bach. She's an evaluation specialist with Sherwood. And then our own supervisor in human growth and development and curriculum instruction assessment, Dr. Karen Spencer-May.
Michelle will start us out, just talking about a little bit of background knowledge. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, for allowing us the chance to come and give you an update on our adolescent health project. My name is Michelle Zeig. I'm the executive director of the Women's Fund of Omaha. And as a brief reminder, the Women's Fund is a nonprofit foundation whose mission is to identify issues, fund solutions, and lead change to improve the lives of women and girls. Our research has consistently pointed to sexual literacy, or the lack thereof, as a barrier to women and girls achieving their full potential in our community. Because of this, the Board of Directors has invested more than $200,000 in programs that build sexual literacy and aim to reduce rates of teen pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. Despite these efforts, we still have epidemic rates, as you can see, of gonorrhea and chlamydia up here. With these rates in mind and our research in mind, the Women's Fund is partnering with the Sherwood Foundation to reduce the number of adolescents engaging in risky sexual behavior and ultimately looks to reduce the rates of teen pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. As we developed the goals of this project, we quickly realized that in order to be successful, we needed a collective impact approach. We needed strong community partners who believed that reducing these rates was important to both public health and the ability for our kids to become productive members of our community. These partners that you see here serve as members of the Adolescent Health Advisory Board. They help guide our priorities for the project. And they were also, members were here in May when we first talked about the project with you, I believe it was May 5th, which is when we proposed supporting the district and your efforts to update the human growth and development curriculum through a process called WISE. And Brenda is here to tell you a little bit more about that process and where we're at with it.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Brenda Council, and forgive me, I am dealing with, I call it the croup. It could be the flu, it could be bronchitis, I don't know what it is. But I will be brief because I can't breathe very well. When we were here in May, we shared with you that we had recently been selected by the Grove Foundation, along with the Nebraska Department of Education, as the 11th member of the WISE Network. And the WISE Network consists of states where there is aggressive action to institute and institutionalize comprehensive, age-appropriate, medically accurate sex education in the public schools. We have been working closely with the Nebraska Department of Education and the WISE Network to move forward with assisting the Omaha Public Schools in updating their human growth and development curriculum. And as you may recall, when I discussed the WISE method with you in May, I had a slide that showed the entire WISE method, which is a four-phase process. At the time we appeared before you in May, we had just completed the first phase of the WISE method, which was the planning process, where we had conducted an environmental scan that was done by Dr. Melissa Tibbetts, one of our partners from the University of Nebraska Medical Center College of Public Health. She provided an environmental scan to let us know where we were in terms of the type of comprehensive sex education that was being offered in the Omaha Public Schools. Again, that environmental scan pointed out the fact that the curriculum hadn't been updated in a while, and there was some concern about delivery of that instruction at all of the grade levels, particularly the seventh and eighth grade. We complemented our research at the planning level with the environmental scan by looking at best practices across the country, as well as conducting some youth interviews, the results of which I will share with you briefly in a moment. But now we're in the engagement phase. And in the engagement phase, we look to engage district partners, and we are grateful that we've been able to work closely with Dr. Kerber, Dr. Karen Spencer-May, all of the other administrators in the Health and Human Growth and Development section of the district. We've been working in partnership in developing the approach that to be taken in terms of updating the curriculum. We're now at the phase where we are going out to the community to seek their engagement. And included in the community are the young people that you serve in the Omaha Public Schools. And I thought it would be beneficial to share with you some of the results of our youth interviews. These interviews were conducted by Dr. Christopher Fisher, also with the College of Public Health at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. He interviewed young people in the age range 15 to 24 and asked them a variety of questions about their knowledge and understanding of sexual literacy and reproductive health. And I wanted to share this slide with you because it shows the results of the interview question posed to young people about where they obtained their information around sexual health and reproductive health, pregnancy and STDs in particular. And I want to direct your attention to the fact that the overwhelming number of respondents chose as their first place to obtain information about sexual health and literacy was the schools. That was the first choice of the overwhelming majority of the young people. And you'll see in the order how they identified who they go to in the schools: teachers, human growth and development, school counselors. I want to take you down that list because the next source of information for young people is internet, and that's Google in particular. And I don't know about you, but if you Google some of the issues around sexual health and literacy, you'd be appalled at some of the information that you find out there on the internet. So that is not the source of information that we want our young people relying on. Next, friends. Now, I don't know, again, about you, but my friends, when I was 14, 15, 16 years old, knew about as much as I knew, which was nothing. And as a result, they were sharing inaccurate information with me. Next, healthcare providers. And then fifth, parents. So in terms of what young people in OPS believe is the best source to them for information around their reproductive health, their sexual health, is Omaha Public Schools, which I think illuminates the need for us to update the curriculum and ensure that we're providing age-appropriate, medically accurate information. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Karen Spencer-May, who can provide you with an update of where we are actually in terms of implementation.
I wanted to first thank you for giving us this opportunity, because you don't know how happy the teachers are. Our teachers have always been about finding more current information, but for us to consistently have good information and current information, the ability to have new textbooks and new materials for our teachers is really important. We've always been in human growth about the beliefs of our parents and our community. And we have always stuck to what the community and our parents have wanted us to do. So that's why we're really, really happy to have this opportunity to do a phone interview with our parents. Some of the things that we've done this fall already, or since last May, would be that we've done some training with teachers. We've met with middle school principals to encourage them to consistently offer human growth to seventh and eighth graders for a quarter at each grade level. And then the other thing is a phone interview survey, and I have Erin Bach here from the Sherwood Foundation to describe that.
Hey, Erin Bach, Director of Research and Evaluation from Sherwood. So, like has been characteristic of this entire process, we've come up with this survey that was collaborative in nature. You guys, I have heard other researchers comment on the expertise of the Research and Evaluation Department at OPS, and they sure have risen to the task with us, as well as Dr. Tibbetts from the College of Public Health. Sherwood is going to be supporting this survey that is going to be done by WCI Research Associates. And we're looking at executing fairly quickly next month, between next month and February. And really want to lift up what are the voices of parents, what do they think, and what are they experiencing, and talking about these subjects with their kids. And I think that's it about the survey. We're really excited. Thank you for this opportunity.
This is what's left. Well, what's left is the biggest part of it. Really big part. In January, besides the parent interview, at the end of January, beginning of February, or maybe late February, we have to kind of squeeze it in between other events that are happening in the district. We would like to have a community forum. And what we're kind of planning is maybe round tables and have community members come and talk and share, and we'll give them a little bit of information that we've learned, as well as getting input from them. So we're really hoping that that turns out to be a successful event. We will review the data. We will update our curriculum based on the analysis from the data collection that we have. We're very excited about new textbooks and materials. I've contacted teachers and asked them if they were interested, and immediately I had 20 teachers that said, count me in, I'm ready to help. And so, we will begin that as soon as we can. We won't be able to, you know, definitively define what it is that we'll do until we have the rest of the data, but we can start looking at textbooks and some things like that. Over the summer, teachers will revise the curriculum, and we will do future teacher training and purchase and implement new materials. And that is our timeline for the rest of, until next summer. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Ms. Merriger?
Thank you so much for this. I know it's scary when we talk about the timeline from when we last made a real review and overhaul of this, because I was in fourth grade in 1992-93. And so knowing that our students now are basically getting the same information and material that-
It's not quite the same information.
Not quite the same, but-
I do want to say that, that we go in and update the information.
Yes, but not a massive overhaul reevaluation review. And I want to bring this up because someone asked me today, actually. I know in the materials that you presented us with, it said that the survey would, there would be work done to make sure it was representative of the district as a whole. And someone did ask me, you know, how specifically are we making sure that our ESL and non-English-speaking families and refugee families are being included in the survey process?
We're going to turn that over to research.
So these are going to be phone interviews done by WCI Research Associates. These would be in Spanish and in English. We don't necessarily have a plan to reach our refugee population. That might be a little bit trickier. We might want to work with Susan Mayberger in curriculum instruction and assessment, maybe, to get their feedback as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So that's possibly something we could do as part of the community forums.
Yeah, so-
Because I think we did something similar with the strategic plan.
So I guess what we've done in the past, like for the student assignment plan, what's often been good is to have a lesson. And so just kind of working back and forth and get some kind of simple feedback on, you know, these types of topics, maybe not just have them go through the full survey and just keep that to Spanish and English. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Williams, followed by Mrs. Gunning?
So, I mean, I guess I have a couple of things. One, just to talk about what we, the refugee population, I think that's a huge piece that I think we, we need to take the extra measure to make sure that it's translated in as many of the languages as our families speak, because I think that we will miss key educational opportunities if, if we're not able to do that. I mean, how do we teach those with language barriers? And I mean, that's just something. And so that was just a quick comment. I don't, I mean, I have more. I would also like to see in the, the survey piece, I know that the Health Department is gearing up for the 2014 Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And being a part of the Board of Health, I know that sexual behavior of our young people here in Douglas County is lower than the national average, which is great, but we do have a due diligence to make sure that we're serving our student population. So I would like to see some partnership with that as far as survey results and sharing that information with the Board of Health as well, so that we're getting accurate information across the board, not just for our students, but I think I'm looking at the community perspective. If we're leading new innovative sexual health classes and all of that, I think that we need to be able to kind of share that. The only other thing that, as I have a young lady and I'm a parent as well, and that's, you know, this is very important, but I, my personal and a lot that I'm hearing from the community is that the primary thing that we should be pushing is abstinence. And I totally agree with that, and I understand that some of the other behaviors, they need to be addressed, but I think as we're moving forward, I think that's the thing that we push more. It's, you are getting the knowledge about STDs and risks and behaviors, but I think we owe it to our students to really push that abstinence piece as a public education entity.
And I will tell you that one of the things that I stress with teachers all the time is that when you're giving a lecture or a discussion about perhaps birth control or whatever, that you always begin with abstinence. We believe that our students should be abstinent. That's where we start all our lessons.
Right. And that's good. I just, you know, I feel that it is important to share that because that's, there are a lot of concerns. And it doesn't always reflect in surveys, and it doesn't always reflect that there is a huge population of families that, they don't necessarily always want to talk about the, what happens outside of abstinence. And so as long as we're pushing that, I think that's the most important part of, of the lesson. And teaching the classes is practicing that. And then teaching them the skills if they are ready or active, or, you know, that's the secondary thing. But I very much believe that they should be abstinent, and that's our due diligence in our roles to make sure that they understand that that should be the primary focus as far as sexual behaviors.
Absolutely. Do you want to address them?
Yeah, I just, I want to affirm making sure that people who are vulnerable's voice is heard in this project. And part of our information gathering is really going to be focused on making sure that that voice is heard, and their real experiences are in the form of credible evidence that we can actually act on. So that's why I'm here, is to make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gunning?
So I wanted to thank you for the comment related to, we always are sensitive to the needs of our communities and families, because I think that that's very important. And to the abstinence piece, I clearly remember eighth-grade human growth and development, and that was the biggest piece of it, and I was very thankful for that as an eighth-grade parent. So, one of the questions I have related to that is when the community forums take place? And I'm just thinking back to when we did the facility studies. And there, will there be something that people will be filling out at that to give you feedback? And if so, will that be available online? I know that we did that for the facility studies so that people could go online if they were unable to make it to the community forum. Just wondering about that piece of it.
We haven't fleshed out the details yet, but we could certainly work on an online part of that as well. But what we were thinking of doing was dot-mocracy sort of thing, where we would have a facilitator at a table, probably have a human growth teacher, maybe a community partner, because there are a lot of partners that are involved in this, this whole process, and, and then let people talk. And then they write down concerns that they have, strengths, and then strengths, and then they vote as to what they think, and it would have a spot for their name and probably, you know, their affiliation is that a parent, a community member, whatever. So we try to do it in that sense. And pick certain topics that we would focus on, and then maybe give them a little bit of time for some other subjects they'd like to address.
Okay. So it will be important that people would be able to actually physically attend because of the format of the-
Absolutely.
Of the forum. Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you. Seeing none. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. This is so much easier than 30 years ago.
Next, we'll move to I-1C, 75 North Project in Howard Kennedy Elementary.
I'd like to invite our team to come forward to provide an update. We have Carol Naughton, who is Senior Vice President with Purpose Built Communities. She's coming in from Atlanta. Big picture overview. Othello Meadows, who's the Executive Director of 75 North here locally. Jennifer Leclair, who is Halftime Principal, Halftime Special Projects for Elementary Education within Curriculum Instruction Assessment. And they will be providing you an update, an overview, as well as future work that is being planned.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. My name is Carol Naughton. I am a Senior Vice President with Purpose Built Communities. As you will recall, Purpose Built is a not-for-profit consulting group. We help local leaders around the country design and implement neighborhood revitalizations that are designed both to create healthy and sustainable neighborhoods, but also to include a pathway out of poverty and into prosperity for the lowest-income families in the neighborhood. Our experience is based on our work over the last 19 years in the Eastlake neighborhood of Atlanta and what we're learning from other communities around the country. We're delighted that the School Board, every member of the School Board, and Mr. Evans and other key staff members had the chance to visit with us in Eastlake this fall. We appreciate the time and the effort that that took for each of you to make that a priority, to visit with us. As you know, our model is holistic in nature, and it includes three key strategies implemented in a neighborhood over time. The first strategy is around creating high-quality mixed-income housing that will serve families across a broad range of incomes beautifully. The second piece, and the piece that we'll concentrate on tonight, is creating that cradle-through college education pipeline that will serve children from infancy and move them on to the very highest levels that they can achieve. And the third piece is around community health and wellness. Now, you can imagine that implementing this model takes lots and lots of partners, each doing what they do really well. No one organization or entity can do all this work by itself. So we need a chief cat herder and bottle washer. We call that organization a community quarterback. In this case, Othello Meadows and 75 North serve as that role. I should also share with you that our model is not just being implemented in Atlanta, but being implemented now in 11 communities across the country. And we're dancing now with 30 others to determine whether our model is the right model for a particular community. And we are the partner to help a neighborhood achieve the goals that they set for themselves. I'd like to turn it over to Othello now, to ask him to give you an update about some of the exciting things that have been happening in North Omaha over the last couple of months.
Thanks, Carol. And I'm so glad to be here. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to inquire about our project. First of all, just to give you a couple of updates about the entire project. We are moving ahead full speed with the city on our planning and zoning permitting process to start on our first phase of housing, which we're scheduled to start in the third quarter of 2015. That'll be about 106 mixed-income apartments, right there at 30th and Parker. About a $25.5 million project to begin with. So really excited to get that stake in the ground and to show that commitment to this community. You know, we're really in it for the long haul. We want to make sure that the community understands that we're not going anywhere. We're going to be here, and we've made a commitment to this neighborhood. So, you know, we've been fortunate, not only to partner with OPS, but you know, through this project, through the last three years, we've had the opportunity to build several really strong relationships. We've had a variety of people and organizations really step up to the plate. The city of Omaha has really been a strong partner of ours with committing actual dollars, as well as easing some of the zoning and permitting restrictions. We've had a great relationship with NIF, with the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, which are playing a huge role in financing this project. So we haven't done it by ourselves. We have a slew of partners that are all anxiously awaiting the opportunity to really dig in and get to work in this neighborhood. Organizations like the Urban League, which almost co-located with the Salem Baptist Church, Charles Drew Health Center. We have a lot of people that are anxious to get this going. Over the last three years, I've probably spoken at 50 different community events or gatherings and spoken to hundreds of people about this project. And all those people are anxious, and all those people are waiting for us to really kick it off and get going in full, full speed ahead. And to that end, the part that they're most excited about, and the part that they want to see the most movement on is this educational piece. When I talk about building beautiful houses and apartments, they get that. But then when I say, "And if we don't do something about the human transformation in that neighborhood, all that will be for naught." And so people understand that, and they're anxious to get on board and help us make that a reality. So I want to walk you back kind of through where we've been over the last few months here. So August 18th, I think you guys have this sheet. It was kind of the first time we really sat down and talked about how we would move this forward. And so we met with Board President Wayne and Superintendent Evans, among others, to really talk about how we get this going. First thing we thought was necessary was to get down to Atlanta and see a school that was taking kids in dire poverty and blowing those expectations out of the water. So the Board, like Carol mentioned, graciously agreed to come down, take time out of their own professional and personal lives to come down and spend some time with us in Atlanta. And so we hope that they got a chance to really kick the tires and ask all the questions they wanted to ask. September 15th, we moved to our first kind of steering committee meeting, which was really trying to figure out how we get our hands around this process, right? So what is it going to take? What's a realistic set of expectations for the next year or so? Then October 6th, we developed an assignment of potential tasks to different individuals within the district to give us the information we need to make good decisions going forward. October 20th, we continue to work on those tasks. The October 20th board meeting was the first time I came to talk to you guys. I had a really good reception and felt positive about the direction we were going. October 23rd, staff met with Dr. Kerberg and Superintendent Evans to give them their feedback and to have the opportunity to be heard about the changes that are proposed at their school. The November 11th Board of Education meeting, there was a request for approval to proceed, which was granted. We were grateful for that opportunity to continue to explore this model and see how it fits in the Highlander neighborhood. November 17th, we held a community meeting at Salem Baptist Church. And we sent out invites to about a half-mile radius of our site, as is required by the city code. Had a great turnout, really good engaged discussion with community members, with community leaders and residents of that neighborhood. So really good turnout, glad to really have an opportunity to interface with people who are right there at the ground level. So December 1st, we had another steering committee meeting where Kennedy staff came and gave us some of their feedback about what was going on. From then, we heard, "Hey, we need something to react to. Like, we can't talk about these things in absentia. We have to have something to look at and say, 'Okay, that's a fit or that's not a fit.'" So we took that feedback and kind of incorporated that into our letter of intent, which we submitted to Superintendent Evans on the 12th. So really excited about having the opportunity to keep pushing forward, to keep moving this process ahead, to hopefully continue to serve these children better in this neighborhood. I think Jennifer Leclair is going to talk about what our plans are going forward. After she kind of wraps that up, we'll be glad to entertain any questions. Thanks.
Hello. So as we think about when we met with you last time and you gave us permission to explore and get feedback from the community and staff, that's what we plan to do here in the next few months. On January 5th, we have another steering committee meeting where we will share the presentation that we plan to share with Kennedy staff on January 12th and the community on January 13th. Our hope there is to share what's working in the Purpose Built model with the staff and community and gather their input and feedback, using that to then develop a plan, hopefully to have a plan drafted and bring it to you in February, and then make revisions as recommended, and hopefully have a plan finalized in March that we could bring back to you for approval. As we think about what those key elements are, I think Mrs. Naughton wanted to share with you what Purpose Built has found in their experience about what those non-negotiables or those key elements are.
Thank you. Board President Wayne was very focused on his visit with us to say, "What are the non-negotiables? What are the secrets to success here?" And so I've met and spent time with the educators on my team to try to condense them into eight bullet points, to think about what the secrets to success are from an educational standpoint. Now, the first thing the educators tell us is, number one, this is part of a holistic community revitalization. The school doesn't have to do it all by itself. Too often, in high-poverty neighborhoods, the school feels like it's got to be, got to do it all alone. Our model brings really high-quality partners together to support what happens inside the school, but also creating the public-private partnerships that address housing needs, out-of-school-hours time, and health and wellness. So educators are supported and children are supported in that way. Second, high-quality early learning for every single child in the community will be a priority. We know that's the best bang for your buck we can get if we can bring high-quality early learning. We know OPS will have to be a partner in developing that. But Omaha is rich in really high-quality early learning partners. And so we expect that we'll be able to bring those partners to the table as well. Leadership, teachers, principals, high-quality principals and teachers who believe that every child can learn at very high levels, an extraordinarily important lever. A rigorous, esteemed curriculum with highly-engaged lessons built upon a foundation of language and literacy, another part of our secret sauce. We believe that teachers, like every other professional, need time to be able to become even better at what they do. So we believe that one of the other levers is embedding professional development in the school day on a regular basis, including common planning time, to create a true professional learning community. We also believe that time on task matters, so we advocate for a longer school year and a longer school day. In fact, one of the schools that we support, a school in Spartanburg, South Carolina, goes to school now 205 school days a year, more than any other public school in the state. We also know that climate and culture are really important in what a school is to a child and to a community. A climate and culture that supports collaboration, high expectations and standards, and a healthy social, emotional environment for both students and staff. And then finally, we believe that transitions don't happen automatically. So we've got to create a real pipeline. How do we connect early learning to the K-5 environment? And build tighter bridges between what happens in the transition between elementary and middle school, and then middle school and high school, and then high school and into post-secondary education. So each of the folks that we are working with around the country are implementing this model. And I'll be the first to recognize that you can't necessarily do it all in year one. So one of the things that we'll be exploring with you and with teachers and leaders at Howard Kennedy over the next couple of months are to get their input as to which of these interventions they think are the most important to move the needle fastest. I feel a huge sense of urgency about this work. The children in North Omaha need this, and they need it five years ago, 10 years ago. So I'm going to keep pushing and pushing and pushing to move forward faster. I have a real bias towards action. And if we can get something going, we can tweak it, we can improve it along the way. But the children in North Omaha need this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Williams.
So I'm a huge supporter of this project. I thoroughly enjoyed visiting the Charles Drew campus, and there was a lot of great things. And you know, it's almost like if you could have it, it was there, and it's awesome. However, and I don't change my support of the program. I think where I have a little pause is the timeline that I think that we're looking at. And I've heard a lot from the community, and I've, just, there's a lot going on. And so I just, I really need to make sure that the community is under the impression that we're solely looking at the Drew model and that we're trying to replicate that exact system. And I was very impressed with Drew, and it did take many years. Where it is, what we saw took many years, a lot of hard work, a lot of transformation. And it's not feasible for us to take a model from somewhere else and replicate that same thing. But I think what, and I'm going to speak a little bit for Kennedy. I know that community. I know the school very well. I think the thing that we're missing is the plan piece. It's the feedback that was given was very open-ended. There wasn't a plan that we gave them to really give insight and information on. And the things that I personally, my personal vision for this is to take the core foundation of the curriculum plan that, you know, that's the foundation and the strengths of Kennedy. For example, small group instruction, descriptive feedback, those are things that I've seen personally. I know that there's lots of professional development going on in those two areas. You know, the descriptive feedback, I wrote notes, so I wouldn't do that. It's, the feedback is praising students for work done for specific skills. It's students understanding, because of that praise for the specific skill, it's their understanding, their own personal strengths and area of improvement. And then it's also the opportunity to positively reinforce that behavior and those areas where they're challenged. And that's something that they're doing very well. And if we're looking at statistics and, you know, they're a gold school this year. Am I correct? So there's things that they're doing very well, and we need to use that as the basis or foundation for the plan. And so I think this directive is, for me personally, more towards staff. It's, let's take those things first. And let's take these Purpose Built communities that we have access to 11 partners and say, "Okay, at Drew, we like..." There was one, it's literacy and, you know, some of those things, and add it. I mean, I think there's, I think that's the core frustration is that we've overlooked all the good work that's going on there, and we're going to reinvent this program. We need to be looking at the foundation of that school and those families. Because what you may not know is that in that building, you have Karin, Karini, Burmese, Hispanic families, families from Somalia, Arabic speakers, English speakers. Being in that school environment, I had no clue, I've learned so much culturally that Karin and Karini are in their native land, they're enemies. In that school, I can say that those two cultures have found a way to get along like never before. What happens outside of the school is those families and those cultures are beginning to have understanding and respect for each other, even outside of what, at home, in their native land. That's a huge thing that that school has done. And I just think that that's how we get a plan and we focus on the strengths of the school. And then we add on the other things. And then we say, "Okay, here's, we're going to, we're going to put together two or three different plans, and we're going to say Plan A." And then we're going to shoot it out to the staff, and we're going to say, "Okay, here's a draft Plan A. And give us your feedback about this." Because I think just giving them options and saying, "Well, what do you think?" How else are they supposed to respond? I mean, let's be honest, and I'm sure that the numbers of the response from the surveys were very low. How do you respond to something you know nothing about? And I think we owe that to that staff. I also think that the timeline, I think February, March is early. I think we take at least six months to get those plans together. So before the 15, 16 school year, we have something the teachers have had very much thought about. I mean, there's teachers in that building that are passionate about what they do. You know, they're kneeling down and they're breaking down behaviors and role modeling different academic skills and instruction skills to these kids. And this is, the family support is going to come from that staff. We have to allow that staff also the time to say, "You know what? I'm super excited. I heard that this is, this could be my dream school, and I am so excited." And the energy about the new opportunities at Kennedy, it's outrageously positive. I mean, it's changed in the last three or four months. You know, it's like, wow, we could be a part of this new outrageous thing that is going to, it's going to change our community. But we also have to consider the staff that maybe they're not ready for the new innovative, and they just want to go and they want to teach kids, and they want to love on them and do what they know how to do best. We also have to allow that staff time to look at, "Where do I want to go? What do I want to do? What's next in my career path?" As well as utilizing 15, 16 to have the staff in the building that want to be there, that professional development time before kids get in the building with this new, whatever it looks like. And then the other staff that are outside in other buildings, to bring those staff in together. So you're creating bonds, you're creating something that 16, 17, they've bonded. They've professional development together, they've thrown ideas back and forth off each other. I mean, that's the type of plan I would like to see. And so this is really more so for OPS staff. It's, let's look at that. If we're going to do this, although there is an urgent need, I think that if we don't take a little bit more time, we will... take a little bit more time, we will set ourselves up for failure, and we want to set ourselves up for success, and there's a lot riding on this, and there's a whole community riding on this, but we really have to be very thoughtful about the community. And at the end of the day, if I think about those students, and we're just trying to rush through it, and now you've broken down, I think the first, the main group of refugees at that school, that really the big wave was, it's been like four years. They've spent four years teaching these kids English and behaviors and just all of this great stuff, and if we push this too far, it's, you know, I think the vision in the community, what they see is you're gonna tear that apart, and then you're gonna start from scratch, and then what are you gonna do? And so I'm very much for this project. I'm excited to see it. I just think as far as the district is concerned, we have a little bit more work to do. I would rather give this a few extra months to plan and get teacher and community feedback, because those, that staff in that building are going to be able to, and we're not selling them anything, but they're gonna be able to communicate with those families and say, you know, they're not from America. We, and now I know that's a part of purpose-built community, is we're teaching them, you know, if there's this new housing, and these are the expectations, and your school staff is gonna be that huge support. So I think that we owe that to the staff in that building and to the families, and I think this thing that you all envision, and I'm super excited for, is going to be 10 times more successful if we give it just a little bit more time and really think this through. And again, like I said, I am a huge supporter of this, and I'm so excited, but I also wanna make sure that those families in that building, the staff in that building have been listened to, have been able to decide what they wanna do, and not, you know, I think the thought is, we're gonna tear everybody out of there, and we have to get past those miscommunications, and we have to get past that and focus that student success and community success is our number-one goal here, and it's not, you know, I think those students and those families are so important, to give them a few more months so that we all know what we're doing, so that we can give them the opportunity to, whatever it is they need to do, if it's staff moving to schools, like I said, whatever that looks like, that is my, I think that's my personal thing, and I think this whole project will be more fluid, it will go smoother, and I think you'll have even more community support if we can kinda look at it through that set of eyes. Thank you.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I completely agree with Ms. Williams on that. I just had two questions. I mentioned this before about the community input, but I just wanna go with the principal here. What makes this principal different from the other principals in the district? Does this principal answer to curriculum instruction, and, or does this principal have some autonomy? What does that look like? How do they get to exercise their power in the school? How do the teachers get to have some autonomy in the school? And my thing is, does it come, does curriculum instruction that happens in the school, does it come from the district? And if it does come from the district, do we have a turnaround plan for all our schools that are turnaround schools in the OPS? I don't know if we do have a turnaround process or plan for every school that needs one, and if we do, how do we implement that and then take what they say, I mean, what Purpose-Built Community says is the necessities that needs to happen in the school and apply that to what we are currently using? I don't think we have one. I might be wrong, but do we have a turnaround plan for the entire, for all our turnaround schools?
What the district has, and I think we may have talked about it, we're hoping to present it to the Board of Education in January. Every school has to have a continuous plan for school improvement. That is a requirement. It is something that's a high expectation in this district, and as a result of that, it's implemented deeply. It's what our executive directors were hired to do, was make sure that academic action plan is implemented with fidelity, and that's in every school improvement plan. Now, if it wasn't working, NISA scores would not go up, ACT scores would not go up, graduation rates would not go up, suspensions, expulsions would not go down, and membership is going up. So for eight years, this district went down in academic achievement. Look at the World Herald, look at the data, you're going to see that. We put in a new school improvement plan in the 2011, '12 school year, we have gone up consistently three years in a row. So is the district-wide continuous school improvement plan working? Yes. Can it be made stronger? Of course. Do we have examples of deeper implementation at some schools? Yes. In those schools, are we getting higher returns? You heard from Pawnee Elementary Principals, Sandy Breadfeld, she spoke about it, and the high return she's getting. You heard from Sharon Royers, she has gone up every year in a row, three to five percentage points. She spoke to you. They've all implemented the school improvement plan with a core plan of academic action plan deeply. Now, I have to tell you, when this was implemented, it changed our world. Prior to having this, every school did what they wanted. I could've said, I'm at School X, I wanna increase math night. I'm at School Y, I want to increase parent-teacher conferences. I'm at School Z, I really believe it's about more community involvement. There was no standard metric, so each school couldn't be compared to another school, because no one had standardized goals. We now have, and it's in our strategic plan, a metric at each school that is measured annually and stated, where we say, did you increase by a certain percentage, done mathematically using the federal government's algorithm from No Child Left Behind? Did you increase the percent you were expected? And if you didn't, why not, and how can we help you? Executive directors review the school improvement plan, it's reviewed by curriculum instruction assessment, they do mid-year checks, we have stats to see if they're progress monitoring, we use acuity as our data to measure growth. If we didn't do all those pieces, there would not be the returns on achievement. We went many, many years going down in the Omaha Public Schools. We have restored the faith in the community because of this board's leadership, because of the belief that we're now going up instead of down. Our achievement's up, our graduation rate's up, our ACT scores are up, our NISA is up. It's because of that turnaround process. Now, one set of schools, and this is really important, has to do more than any of the other schools, and we're planning on a presentation in January. They're the schools that are in No Child Left Behind, Year Three Needs Improvement. They have to go into what is formally called as deeper implementation of the school improvement plan. Now, this year, we have a set of schools that are in Year Four, which is planning for restructuring. It's a part of No Child Left Behind. They have to increase their data checks from every nine weeks to six weeks. They have to increase their conversations about student success from every month to every other week. The deeper, more intense requirements are something we just presented to our principals at the end of the November, no, December principals meeting, after we did inter-rated reliability, because we have 21 schools going into deeper implementation. Diane Steamer's gonna come from the State Department. She says, look, I've seen school improvement plans on restructuring from a lot of school districts. We've got a lot of Native American, they're called the Indian School Districts, I'm sorry, I can't remember the formal name, Winnebago, Macy, other school districts like that. Thank you very much, Mrs. Faye. Those school districts and others have got plans. The deepest, most rigorous restructuring plan they've seen in the state of Nebraska, Diane Steamer, our State Department Coordinator, federal program, said, is the Omaha Public Schools. She would compare our restructuring program to any in the nation. And based on the results, we've had Robert Marzano, if that's a name you know, comment on our work. We've had comments from a gentleman named Mike Schmoker, he wrote a book called Focus: High-Performing School Districts. We have had feedback. Kathy Kennedy has been a national consultant we've taken advantage of, and others, but the feedback we're getting is phenomenal. Even Cross and Joffe, when they came in, said, your instructional framework puts it amongst the best in the nation. So are we going the right direction? Yes. But do we have a ways-to-go? Yes, we do. Even though we have increased in all subject areas three years in a row, we're not there yet. We're at 60% proficient in math at elementary, we need to be at 80%. So we're still in process, but some of our highest-performing schools, Gilder Elementary, beating the odds. Regression analysis, take a look at their data. They are outperforming based on their demographics because of refugee migrant ESL students. Gilder Elementary is performing statistically significant above where they should be. They're not a dual-language, they're not a magnet school, they are a school with a high-achieving principal and high-achieving teachers, implementing deeply best practices, the academic action plan embedded into the school improvement plan. Was this a shift? I will ask, you ask any principal in this district, it changed their world. They were in a place where if you'd asked them, what's their school improvement plan? They said, we get to choose, there's no structure, we're able to pick what we want. Now it is a measured metric that's comparable between and among schools with guided support from executive directors, monthly training, and support at principals' meeting. Most of it is building-led professional development. Three months a year, it is district-led turnkeys that are provided on to teachers. Six months a year, it is building-led professional development. So our principals are becoming professional leaders, we've given them best instructional practices, handbooks, documents, training, videotapes, et cetera. So we've got national recognition for continuous school improvement and local.
So the answer is yes.
As you can tell, I'm so glad you asked.
So if the answer is yes, have we used this plan at Kennedy?
Correct. In fact, Kennedy, and I don't know if there's a Kennedy staff member here, but that's a school that, when they talked about descriptive feedback in small group, that's the gradual release of instruction, that's called guided practice. They're doing that at Kennedy. They're getting those kind of growth gains.
So if that's the plan that we use at Kennedy and we're using at all the other schools, if we have a plan, if we bring, let's say, we bring this principal, and is that principal acting in, under this plan, or is it a complete different plan that they're acting under?
Can I have, that's part of the, that's part of whatever plan comes out as far as how that structure will be, so I think it'll be however we set up the plan. I'll let you.
I was just saying, like, my main argument that was kinda last time was, it's good to talk about this, but if we can't really see, if we're talking about an innovative school and all this, I mean, if everyone says the key component is the principal, we should have some type of foundation of what this principal will be, how much authority this principal will have in this school, how much would they be able to make shifts within the school? I've talked to many people, and they said, the less red tape this principal would have could possibly be the better, that they could really make a lot of changes because they're really embedded in the school. And that was just one of my conversations that I just wanted to bring up. Is this curriculum instruction, is all this coming from the curriculum instruction department and being dictated by the executive directors, or does this principal have that ability to be their own? And I don't know if we know that answer yet, I don't think the board has actually had that discussion.
Which brings me up to a point that I just, the question that I have to ask before the board is, when this started three years ago, we didn't have a policy in place. There were multiple meetings, Othello was meeting with individual board members from three different boards, I believe, three different superintendents. Last meeting, we adopted a policy of how we're going to deal with these type of issues going forward. And the last thing on the sheet that was presented by Othello is, they submitted a plan underneath our current policy. So the question I have before the board is, we can direct staff in multiple, multiple directions and tell them to come up with a plan and do all these different things and have more committee meetings, but that's outside of our policy that we just adopted. So if there's a plan before the superintendent, which we have adopted in our policy, that a community organization can submit a proposal, they'll review it, grade it, or have a rubix we talked about, which they still have to develop, and they can tweak it, negotiate it, however they wanna do, and that comes before the board. I would just submit to let that process play out, and if, if there's a lack of community involvement, if there's a lack of staff involvement, that's upon the community organization to make sure all that occurs when it comes to the board. So if it comes to the board, the board raises a question about, was staff involved? I expect an answer, yes. On this date, we had this many people, we talked to this many people, and that's how we proceed. The onus is on them to create that plan according to our policy. We passed it, and all I'm asking at this point is, the last meeting we had, we gave staff direction to create a plan, there was some confusion among staff to, what kind of feedback should we get based off the plan, because there is no feedback to get, because there isn't a plan, but there is a plan that's before Omaha Public Schools. We have a policy in place as a board, and I would submit that we can talk as much as we want here, but unless we're gonna just say, we're gonna ignore our policies, then there's no point of us passing them. So we have a policy in place, so I would say, you know, in my opinion, let that policy and that procedure pass. And if we have to tweak it, we'll tweak it as we go along, but it's already in place for this matter. Ms. America.
Well, and I think, Mr. Wayne, you and Ms. Williams are kind of in my mind saying the same thing, because in order to, I mean, as it says, December 12, the letter of intent was submitted, which is the first step before the full, actual fleshed-out plan as we laid out on our policy, and in order to present that to us, and you have to go through the steps that Ms. Williams outlined of putting together some options, working with staff, because, as you said, in the, when the actual fleshed-out plan is presented, we're going to be looking for, was there community input, was there staff input? And we can't, I don't expect the people putting together the full plan to work in a vacuum. They're gonna have to ask questions of the board of what we wanna see a little bit, they're gonna have to ask questions of staff and the community, and when I say staff, I guess I mean tax staff, and building staff, in order to flesh that out. So really, I think we're, I think we're all kinda saying the same thing of, yes, the full plan needs to come out based on the policy that we passed, but as part of that, maybe we should go through having the different options, letting the staff go through that, because in order for it to be successful, it's gonna have to have their input and buy-in to begin with.
Any other comments? Ms. Underwood, followed by Mr. Evans, followed by Mr. Vargas.
Yeah, that was gonna be part of my comments, too, is just following the process for the letter of intent. I think, once that comes back to the board table, you know, assuming that it does and it gets fleshed out by the superintendent, then we will be able to have those conversations at the board table. And I thought it was really helpful for Ms. Notton to outline the intangibles. I took notes and wrote down everything that she mentioned, because I think those are the types of things that we can look for in this proposal as we're kind of hashing through things. I think it will also be helpful for us to kind of formulate a vision to help with that sort of chicken-and-egg scenario that we've had, where we've been, we've asked staff to, and the community, to give feedback, and feedback on what exactly. So we can formulate that vision, you know, the models that have been floated in front of the board have been, you know, Wilson Focus School has been mentioned, and doing something similar to the Drew Charter School has been mentioned as well, but I think going through that community, that proposal process will allow us to have those discussions at the board table.
Mr. Evans, followed by Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Wayne. I do have a copy of, I think I received this from Othello on Friday, it's a nicely-written response to the LOI, and of course, this LOI is a new concept for all of us, but it really doesn't, it doesn't really outline a detailed plan. What it does is answer those elements in the LOI, like, how does the proposed partnership benefit OPS? And it's got a nice explanation of how that partnership benefits OPS. How does it align to the strategic plan? It's a nice description of how it aligns. Nice description of the intended outcomes, nice description of brief on how outcomes are measured, but it really doesn't give a fully defined, fully fleshed-out plan that identifies every single aspect of the school, whether it's extended day, extended year, whether there's a theme to it. What's the principal's role? I mean, you were asking a very specific detail, Mr. Snow, that's certainly not in here. I mean, that's well beyond what this description is. It's much more generic than that. And from my perspective, I guess part of what I'm looking for is clarity, too, because I feel like we're getting pulled two different ways. I mean, you were very abundantly clear about a month ago, don't- about a month ago, don't talk about it until you talk to staff. You were abundantly clear. So I want to make sure we're not hearing a different message. We want to make sure we're going the right direction. But we are supportive of the program and have been all along. And we were back in August when Justin and I first met with Othello. So I think that's always been the case, but figuring out how best to move forward is what we're looking for and have been looking for for a little while. So I do have the document. It does, I think, answer the LOI, but I don't believe it answers the details that you're looking for and what you just mentioned, for example, on the principal.
Mr. Vargas followed by Ms. Williams.
Thank you, President Wayne. So I think there's one reaction I have to Mr. Snow's questions around, you know, what is turnaround in our district? It's very helpful, Ms. Kerberg, that you described what we're doing to improve schools. And I think we do that, or it sounds like we're doing that progressively over time, and we are learning from best practices within the district. But when I really think about and I dissect, when we look at school turnaround, I don't think we are, and I think, as you described it, basically closing the achievement gap and doing it dramatically, doing it quick, you know, making sure we're making concerted effort. That's what I appreciate about this initiative, so much that I want that piece of it to be embedded in a more comprehensive plan on how our district approaches turning around schools. Many things came up today that seemed to fit in with this. It seems like we have a lack of, there's some ambiguity. We have a lack of cohesiveness around, somebody mentioned focus schools today, somebody mentioned, we talked about this school choice piece. We're talking about, you know, 75 North. There are question marks around our district strategy on how we are going to turn around our persistently lowest-performing schools. And over a five-to-10-year span, not every school, a plan for each one, which we do have within our school improvement process, which is, you know, is the step in the right direction and is clearly having impact. But how are we turning around, you know, the five to eight lowest-performing schools? What are the flexibilities we're providing them? What are the innovations we're going to take advantage of that, you know, very might as well include 75 North and what's going on in Atlanta, in addition to the other things that we know that is happening within our district? I think what's hard, and I'm looking at the Wallace Foundation white paper on school turnaround, and one of their large system-level lessons learned, their first one is planning, and it goes to what Ms. Williams said, articulate a powerful vision for turnaround and make tough decisions. That is what is the best practice from a district. I think that's what's missing here. We have tremendous partners. We have tremendous political and community will. I think it is dangerous, and it's a conversation we should have as we go through this, dangerous to not create a comprehensive plan embedded in our strategic plan around school turnaround, around innovation, that allows for these types of programs to thrive. And for them to not live in isolation, because what I'm looking at right now, we also have a lack of capacity. I'm looking at a staff member who's taking half of their time to do this work. There are districts large in our size or around our size that have whole departments dedicated to the school turnaround and school improvement work. I think that we need to figure out how to find sustainable funding and sustainable infrastructure and capacity to make sure we can do this over the long run and not rely on just these initiatives that are outside of our district. That needs to be embedded in what we're doing.
Ms. Williams followed by Mr. Snow.
So I just, Mr. Vargas, there was a few things that you said that I wholeheartedly agree with as far as our district, but right now, we're talking about one school. And this letter of intent, this is not 75 North School. This is our school. My ask to district staff, to curriculum, and I see Dr. Kerberg writing tons of notes, thank you, but it's how do we work with this school right now? Because this is the basis of this project, is we are in the heart of this project. It's our school. This is our district. And how can we do some of those very things that Mr. Vargas was talking about? Well, we have, we do have Wilson, but we're not talking about Wilson right now. We're talking about Howard Kennedy. We're talking about staff, students, and families that your workday is, you spend more of your time, of your life, at work than you do at home. These are staff and families that are counting on us to do the right thing for their school. They don't necessarily care about what's going on at Wilson or what any other, they're focused on here. And we've spent this time, and there's community money, and there's all of these great things, but we have to develop, it's on us to develop this plan. And again, I mean, I've spent a couple of sleepless nights, unfortunately, on this because I see the families, I see the students, you know. This affects me personally a little bit because I've been there and I've seen great growth. In five years, I've seen great things at that school happen, amazing things that aren't happening anywhere else. Let's take the foundation of what they are doing very well, and let's add on. And I think the rest of the conversation is more, it's not necessarily directed to, what does the school plan look like? What do we have in store for the school? What do we want in the school? What 75 North is doing and the letter of intent, and that's all well and good, but we still have a school to take care of. We still have a board vote to make sure that we are going to do the best thing for this school. And that's where our focus should be, right now. I mean, you have a community thinking that this school, the principal's gone and all the staff is gone, and that, those are the areas that we need to be focused on. And I'm going to harp on that because that's what I know, that's what I believe, that's what I see, that's what I hear. This is something that I'm very passionate about. It's, this is going to benefit a community and our city. But first and foremost, we have a school that we have spent lots of time looking at and talking about. When do we stop talking about it? When do we start to develop? You know, it's kind of, we're getting into that phase again where it's a plan of a plan, and we don't need a plan of a plan. We need something solid. And I have full faith in that our curriculum can do that. But I don't honestly think that we've given them any directive at this point. So, and that's my suggestion, and that's my vision. And I don't know where anyone else feels, but you do need to take the foundation of what they're doing well, and then you can create innovation by looking at other purpose-built schools and what they're doing. But I think the focus has to be on what that school does well, that the school population and what those families are going to need and what their students are going to need. Staff, I mean, I've literally seen staff cry because they're like, I don't care about what happens to me in my job. I'm concerned about these kids. I'm concerned on where they're going to school, where they're going to go, and who's going to teach them, and who's going to care for them like we care for them. That should be the number-one focus in this conversation, is what are we going to do with our school, regardless of what else is going on in that community and around it? The school is, that is our thing. We own that, and that's the one thing that we're supposed to be here talking about and setting policy for.
Mr. Snow.
So, thank you. My comment or explanation is to explain, Mr. Evans saying, feeling like being pulled in two different directions. So the last meeting, when I was speaking with Dr. Kerberg, we were talking about community input, and that was one of the things that I was talking about. And the main reason was, what is that community? What are people saying about Kennedy? Do they not like Kennedy? Do the students and the families there say, we want to change Kennedy? What is that? I mean, from what I hear from Ms. Williams and what I hear from certain people that go to Kennedy, they like their school. So what is this change? And that was the entire conversation. Have we really sat down with the community at Kennedy and said, this is what, what do you think of your school? What do you think of your principal? Sit down with the staff and the principal, what do you think of this school? What are the achievements? What are the high goals that you, what are the achievements you've made and the failures that you've had, and how can we best help you? And today, I mean, I kind of shifted gears a little bit. Today, I wanted to talk about that principal piece. If we're really going to be talking about moving a plan forward, what is that, what is that main piece if we're going to have that? And I'm sure, have we, I mean, what, that community piece? Have we adopted, I mean, obviously, it seemed like in the last meeting that when we came up here, that they had money for the SIG that I think that they wanted us to approve if we approved that plan. Is that correct? So obviously, there was some funding there to create something that we didn't even know. And that was my entire piece from the last meeting. So if we did get that community piece, where is it? What are the people thinking about Kennedy? What is the principal and the staff saying? This is what our school's doing well? This is what we're failing in? How can the district help us? And this is what this change could be? I'm sure you have an answer for that.
Well, I'm going to honestly say, and I'm just going to jump here and answer that, right now, I'm going to speak and they're confused. They have no clue. I think most of that staff, they're scared for their jobs right now. That's, you can't go in there and ask them, what do they think about their school, when they're like, okay, I have a family of my own to take care of, my livelihood, my career is, I mean, those are things that we're not, this, for me, it's not, we need to give them some direction. Again, we need to come up with some plans to start this process. And then, you know, assuring them that their jobs aren't in jeopardy, that, you know, they are a very integral part of the school in our district, but we also have to come up with a plan. And then ask for feedback. I mean, and I get the community piece, but if we don't have anything to give to the community or to the staff, how can we honestly get feedback? I mean, we're kind of opening ourselves up for...
I'm not asking for feedback. I'm just trying to see this current state of Kennedy. People that are involved in Kennedy, what is the current state of Kennedy? What do they feel about Kennedy?
Well, and...
And that's, that was my whole...
Right. But, I mean, you've got to think about, if this story is...
One second. For the board, for one second. Let's, there's some other board members who haven't spoke on this issue yet at all. So let's hear them, and we can come back to that. But they haven't spoken at all. Mrs. Fay followed by Ms. Gouding followed by Mr. Scala.
So I'm going to, I have a, let me first ask you a question, and maybe it's for Carol, or maybe it's for Othello. But you talked in the beginning about the Chief Cook and Bottle Washer, that lead organization. What would you see the role of 75 North in Howard Kennedy as being?
Well, I'll take a stab at that first and then let Carol kind of augment it. But, you know, the way we look at this, and I'm going back to Yolanda's point about it being your school and OPS's school, and...
Well, and let me interject there, because the school belongs to the community.
Sure.
So, and I know that, I know that that's Ms. Williams', but I don't, I don't think anybody believes that the school is our school, I think you meant, our school in the collective, community sense. So, and I think everybody knows that you've done a tremendous job of reaching out and getting that, taking the temperature of the community and getting feedback from them. I don't, so I don't think any, the district...
Yeah, I just, I didn't want you to think I had any aspirations of running a school anytime soon.
Right, right.
So I don't. And that's absolutely right in terms of the way we look at it, as this is a community school. The way we think that we bring value to this and the way that the role we think we can play is that one thing that we've consistently heard for the last three years from teachers is that we can't do everything ourselves, right? We can't be the social worker. We can't be the food pantry. We can't be the psychologist. We can't be everything to these kids, right? And in the models that we've seen be successful, there's an organization that exists solely to make a neighborhood, to create a neighborhood that supports teachers and supports learning and education. And so 75 North, and so there's not somebody at Kennedy that can go and say, all right, well, I need to find a resource for Charles Drew to open a student health center in the, you know, in the building, right? But we have time, we have the resources to do that. And so we think we bring value in that sense that there are things that are outside the scope of education that have a huge impact directly on the education. And things that I don't think, and maybe I'm wrong, that the average school has the capacity, the time, the energy to really focus on. So our goal in that is to create a neighborhood, to create an environment that supports learning and supports education, that makes it much easier for teachers to come to school and teach. That's the role we see ourselves playing.
All right. Thank you. So you said some, did you want to add anything to that, Carol? Okay. And you said something that I think is really important, and that is that the feedback that you've gotten from the staff is that they don't feel like they can do everything themselves. And so when I, you know, listen to the input that we've had so far on this, I don't see, there's a couple of things. I don't see this as necessarily taking the place of school turnaround, a school turnaround plan, or being mutually exclusive from a school turnaround plan, but rather being one option that's community-specific. And I think I look at it more as an opportunity for something that addresses community-specific needs. And the fact that we don't have to do it all. So while it is an Omaha Public Schools' school, our primary purpose of providing a quality public education for our students can be supplemented and supported by all of the pieces that are provided through 75 North and through the whole purpose-built community. So I, and I think that the great opportunity that exists right here is that there are interested and engaged partners who can take the great start that Ms. Williams has referred to, the things that they've been doing, and can build on that. They can take, you know, if there's dedicated staff that fit into that model, they can take them and build on that success. I think that that's, for me, it's not, as I said, mutually exclusive from a turnaround plan, and it's not buying into something presented for Howard Kennedy doesn't mean we can't do other things in other parts of our district, but it's a real opportunity to take advantage of a really excellent model and many of its key elements, if not most of them, and implement them in a school that appears to be ripe for that. I know that some of the things that I heard Carol talk about, well, first of all, I love the STEAM curriculum, my, you know, background in the arts. I think it's, you just can't have STEM without the arts. You've got to have STEAM. But that's a whole other conversation. But I think the ability to have the professional development embedded in the school day and responsive to the needs of that individual building, I think that the building leadership and giving them some autonomy, the governance structure, and maybe what role community plays in that, I think those are all things I really look forward to seeing when that plan is fleshed out, those kinds of details. So, but I think overall, it's, I don't want to disregard the opportunity because there's questions or because maybe it doesn't fit into an overall school turnaround model. I don't want to just disregard the opportunity. I want to really take advantage of the, the work that's already been put into it, the enthusiasm and the community support. And when I say community, I mean Omaha, the community at large that is behind this particular initiative.
If I could add on to that a bit and address Mr. Vargas's point a little bit, you know, we really are huge supporters of OPS, and want OPS to be successful not only at Kennedy, but district-wide. The things that need improvement at Kennedy exist in many other places in the district. And, you know, I think if we're not focused on the bigger picture, then we're all really wasting time. So one of the things that we see ourselves, one of the roles we see ourselves playing is also allowing the district initially and early on to kind of learn from what's happening at Kennedy or what happens at Kennedy. And then really vet those things to see, okay, is this a fit here? Is that a fit at Conestoga? Is that a fit at Wakanda? Do these things work in other high-poverty situations? You know, I have to say it, you know, I've been in dozens of schools the last few years. And when I met Drew, it's the last school I've been in that has actually erased the achievement gap that we're all here saying that we're pulling in the same direction towards erasing. You know, this gap, I was at a place where that doesn't exist, where the low-income kids outperform the non-low-income kids. And so when I see that, I look and I say, all right, if there's a way for us to support OPS, Kennedy moving in that direction using what over 20 years has proven to be an effective method, I'm all for that. So, you know, I want to take those same lessons and implement them as deeply as we can here in Omaha. You know, I don't want our kids to feel like, you know, I think if you ask any parent, and this goes back way longer than anything that 75 North has been involved in. If you talk to Willie, we've been, you know, he's been talking to people in this community for 10 years about what this community wants. And one thing flows through the top every single time they do this, right? When people learn and actually raise their own expectations for what their kids are capable... capable of, they want the absolute best. When they learn that kids that come from a place just like Pleasantview, or Spencer Homes, or Vietnam when it was here, they know that if somebody else's kids living in that environment is now at a school that performs in the top 5% like, like Drew does in Atlanta, that changes that paradigm and it changes their own expectations for their kids. And one of the things that I've said since I began this work is that unless we have those expectations for our own kids, for kids who come from Spencer Homes, from Vietnam, from Hilltop, from Pleasantview, then we're wasting time and we should be ashamed of ourselves. Those expectations that we've seen kids meet, that we've seen kids in poverty meet, we should have those for everybody in this city. And I've been to one school where they've smashed that achievement gap, smashed it. It was just recognized by Educational Trust, and they won the most aptly named award I've ever heard of, the Dispelling the Myth Award. They dispelled the myth that poor kids can't learn at the same rate as everybody else's kids. So I'm gonna get off my soapbox, I promise, but when I see that proven method in a way that works with the same type of population we have, I can't help but get excited about that. All we really want is the opportunity to bring you a plan, to bring you something, let us flesh it out, engage the staff, engage the community, and bring it to you and say, hey, what do you think? We love that opportunity. My understanding is that I answer the questions in a letter of interest, and then the board would decide whether or not they wanted to hear more from us. So I'm hoping that you'd like to hear more from us and a more fleshed-out, fully-developed plan for your comment and input. So I'll get off my soapbox, so I know somebody else has something to say.
Mrs. Gouding, follow, Mr. Scala.
Okay, that, that ties in exactly to what I was gonna say. So first of all, thank you, Othello, thank you Carol for being here, thank you for the passion you have for the students of Omaha. So I went back to the policy we approved last time. I just want to read that, um, because I think that hopefully will help clarify and goes along exactly with what Othello said. Should the, should the superintendent determine that an LOI merits further review, the superintendent shall submit such LOI to the board for their consideration. The superintendent or the superintendent's designee will provide the board an update on LOI. All LOIs reviewed, the board shall determine by majority vote whether the applicant will be invited to submit a formal written community partnership proposal, and then it goes on to say what you would need to do. So I think that that's really, what we wanted to do was say, okay, submit the LOI. I would assume that Mr. Evans will present that to us at the next board meeting, and then we can make that decision. And I would assume that a plan would include the community and the teachers and everyone. So I just want to thank you for being here and sharing and caring and, and putting your time into it, because I think Carol spoke very thoughtfully about some of the things that we will probably see in that plan, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Mr. Scala.
I'll be brief. I was just gonna say the same thing that the board, as a board, we need to understand that we're just given the okay to, for them to formulate a plan. We're not approving the plan, they don't have the details to tell you what, what their plan looks like. It's just a, yes, we will listen to you when you come back with the plan, and it's not wasting their time to go forward with a plan and then for them to bring it back to us and us say, no, we're not considering that at all. So I guess we just need some clarification that all we're looking for tonight is to say, yes, this is a plan, go formulate it, tell us what it looks like, come back, present to us, and then we can ask the specific questions and we can get into the details of what that plan for Howard Kennedy looks like. And it'll be 75 North working with the school district, so it's not 75 North developing a program, it's a partnership working together that we are going to form an idea of how do we overcome some of the learning challenges at Howard Kennedy and make that one of our top-achieving schools.
Agreed. Um, is there any other comments, questions, concerns? Hold on one sec, um, did we make a motion last time, Mr. Ray? Or was it...
For the policy?
No, for 75 North.
I'll have to look.
Okay, so, so although we adopted the policy afterwards, we made a motion on November 11th, 2014. This was presented as an information item today, so we can't make a motion today, but we already made a motion for them to develop a plan. So although the LOI was submitted afterwards, that was because we only had the first reading of the LOI, not the second one. I think we're, we're still good to go, and I think the first vote on November 11th is good to go, and I think we can move forward. I don't think we need to keep coming back for another motion to develop a plan, we've already approved them to develop a plan. I don't see, is anybody shaking their heads? No? Okay, so a full plan, next, next time this comes to the board, it should be a full plan. There we go. Alright, thank you, Othello, for your time. Mrs. Underwood.
Alright, so shifting our mindset here to Student Assignment Plan. So the subcommittee met, uh, last week, I believe it was, and, um, the research staff and Matt Ray have been conducting meetings with a staff advisory group, um, and basically are moving forward with the three models that were presented to the board. I think it was, um, sometime last summer when we had our Student Assignment Plan rollout, um, and those three models were the cluster, the zone, and the neighborhood plans. Those were vetted by staff and, uh, feedback was taken. And we've already started some of the community meeting process with the, um, CAC meeting last week, and, um, so that process is underway. There are a few more, uh, community meetings scheduled over the next few weeks. One of the, I guess, some of the things that, that floated to the top as far as, um, the highlights go and that we've consistently heard both from the board and the community and from staff, um, are that, you know, they want to encourage choice based upon interests and to encourage and promote diversity. We want to make transportation as effective and efficient as possible. Um, you know, we haven't, as a board, had the discussion around, we're spending too much money on transportation, but it feels like on the, at the subcommittee level, we can at least all agree that if we can make our transportation system more efficient, from where it currently is, then we've probably, that's, that's a good thing. And then the third item is that the current plan is very complex and difficult to explain to parents, uh, you know, which is part of the impetus for us updating our Student Assignment Plan currently. So those are kind of the issues, um, you know, it's nothing new, we've discussed those things before, but those are the things that also came out of, um, the staff advisory group. And I think one of the things that we saw with the, um, CAC meeting last week is that it's really, it's really difficult in, you know, in our, um, community meeting to present the three models plus all of the components that go into those models and all of the pros and cons and for, for, um, our community to fully vet those items and then come up with direction for us. I sat at one of the, the way that research sort of organized the meeting is that they had breakout tables with maybe six to eight people at each table, and research did a great job with it, um, and did a great job explaining everything that goes into those models. But it was really difficult with everything that goes into them to get effective community So one of the things that, you know, we've kind of been discussing as a subcommittee is providing a vision and direction at the board, that the board has agreed on, that we can, that we can base those community meetings on so that they have a little more direction when it comes back to the feedback that they're being asked to give. So we will come up with something as a subcommittee and probably present something. I would like to present it at the January 21st board meeting so that we, as a board, can have that discussion. I think that that pretty much hits on what we've been doing as a Student Assignment Plan Subcommittee, so if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Any? Mrs. Fay.
Well, I really appreciate you bringing up the idea of, of vision and some direction. I think that, um, the feedback that I had from the CAC meeting was just as you articulated it, that it was just a very complex topic and a lot of moving parts and pieces, and they just weren't sure exact, it's, it's sort of the same thing that we just heard with Howard Kennedy, they weren't sure exactly what they were supposed to be providing feedback on. So I really welcome the opportunity as a board to set our priorities for what the outcome of the Student Assignment Plan would be. You've, you've got a good framework to work from based on the choice based on interest, diversity, efficient and effective transportation, and a, and a little bit simpler or, you know, easier way to explain the plan. Uh, so I, you know, you've got a good framework there, so now setting those priorities and agreeing upon a vision, and then that will, I think, really, really help move those community meetings a, a lot more smoothly, that people will say, oh, okay, these are the priorities that the board has set, um, are we okay with that as a community, and does the model that they've set for, for us to give feedback on do that? So there's a couple of questions to ask them, you know, that they may not like our priorities, and then that would be a whole other discussion we'd have to have. But saying that they do, then what is the model that best meets those, uh, helps address those priorities? So I really appreciate the fact that you're gonna look at it that way. Um, I think that's great, and, um, I, the only other thing I would ask is that if, um, there's any possible way for you to provide some documentation, even if it's just as simple as a written thing that outlines those, those four points that you made or something like that in e-meetings. Um, I get so many questions about this particular topic when it's on the agenda, people contact me, you know, for, as soon as it goes up on the agenda, they want to know what it is. Um, so, you know, any guidance that can go out there on that Thursday, Friday, before the meeting to help, um, the public know what it is we're gonna be talking about would be helpful, even if it's just as simple as, you know, what you just presented to us. Thank you very much for the work that the subcommittee does.
Sorry, I'm dozing off. Sitting here just thinking about all the things. Um, any other comments? Mrs. Underwood.
I just wanted to clarify one thing that, um, I failed to mention earlier. The community meetings will continue to happen up until about May, and then, um, there'll be a final recommendation, at least this is the plan, to have a final recommendation in front of the board in May.
Seeing none, we'll move to grade level configuration.
As we continue down this path of non-controversial topics, I will be, uh, providing some information to the board, Mr. President, Mrs. Vice President, Mr. Evans, and members of the board. Central office staff will be providing a recommendation at that January 21st meeting regarding grade level configuration. And that recommendation, as it is now, is one, that all new construction or remodeling of OPS middle schools be done, so based on a 6-8 configuration. Two, that all current OPS middle schools are transitioned to a 6-8 model as soon as their capacity allows, except for King Science and Mars, which will remain 5-8. So again, uh, central office staff will be providing that recommendation as an action item on January 21st, 2015.
Just for, um, prior to that board meeting, just if, if it is possible, just send out all the background information on that so board members are fully informed. Kind of there's a lot of background information the Student Assignment Committee looked at and summarize it, make sure board members have it so...
Right, and some of that information has been supplied at previous meetings as well, so we'll, we'll put it back together.
Try to shorten some of the conversation. Mr. Scala.
Either at that meeting or tonight, if you know the answer why, um, King Science and Mars will remain 5 through 8, uh, for like an explanation?
We can provide that on the 21st.
Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to action item. I to a, appointment of, appointment to the Omaha Schools Employee Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. Mr. Smith? Or Mr. Erickson?
This evening, it's my privilege of introducing Don Erickson, who is a Commercial Lending Officer with First National Bank of Omaha. He is one of the two business community members on the Board of Trustees, and he serves as the President of the Board of Trustees. Don will share with you the process that went into the receipt of applications for the business trustee recommendation, the interviews that the Board of Trustees engaged in, which has led to the recommendation that'll be coming to you this evening of Mr. Jones. Don?
Thank you, Mike, and, uh, members of the board, appreciate the chance to be here this evening. As Mike said, he wanted me to just kind of discuss the process that we underwent to, to make this selection. As you know, the board had requested that we have a more of an open, uh, process than, than in the past, and so we had, uh, online applications through the OPS website, and with that, we had five people that filled out an application and did make an application. When it came time for the interviews, which were on December the 3rd, three people actually came to the trustees' meeting for, for a formal interview. Each of the applicants were asked the same questions by the board members, the questions were formulated by the trustees, and at the conclusion of that process, we, we discussed, had an open discussion regarding the candidates or the applicants, and then a vote was taken, and, uh, Don Jones was the one that was selected. If you've had a chance to look at any of the information, and I think you, you have some of that information in front of you, you'll see that Mr. Jones is very well-qualified to serve on the Board of, of OSERS. He is an actuarial consultant for private and public pension plans. He's worked with Douglas County Pension Committee from 1975 to 2014. He worked with, with the Municipal Fire and Police Retirement System of Iowa from 1998 to 2014. He's also worked with the Retirement Committee for the Nebraska Legislature from 1979 to 1993, and again from 2000 to 2004. He had a 39-year career as an actuarial consultant with the Silverstone Group here in Omaha, and today he's an independent consultant for, for public, for public retirement systems. So I think he's got a lot of great characteristics, a lot of, uh, good qualifications to serve on the board, and that's, and we're pleased to make that recommendation to the board this evening. And with that, I would like to introduce Don Jones, who would like to come up and make a few comments.
Well, thank you, Mike, and, uh, thank you, Don. I'll be brief. Um, I'm... I'm pleased to be here with the Board of Education and I'm also honored to be recommended by the OSERS board, who met about 10 days ago. As Don already mentioned, I founded and operate a independent consulting firm that's focused exclusively on public retirement systems, which is basically what I've learned I liked best out of all the things that I've done over the last many years. That practice focuses on planning, policies, and practices as opposed to the more technical gyrations that actuaries are customarily involved in. That was formed in the middle of this year, following a long career with the Silverstone Group. At Silverstone Group, and Don has already mentioned, I was focused primarily on providing, being the lead consultant and providing actual recommendations to public and private retirement systems. That advice crossed many borders, including funding, plan design, compliance, working with both private and public. We've seen many, many changes in both those systems over the period of time that I've been involved. Let me talk very briefly about why I would like to be a member of the Board of Trustees. First of all, I'd be joining a board for which I've, has earned my respect. While I was with the Retirement Committee in Lincoln, not with the Retirement Committee, as the actuarial consultant to the Retirement Committee, I sat and listened to all presentations made as to proposals. I never understand, could never understand why everybody didn't do it exactly like the OPS Board or the Omaha Public School Systems did, because they would come prepared to explain what they wanted, why they wanted it, the actuary would be there if appropriate, legal counsel would be there where appropriate, representatives of each member interest area would be there presenting. Again, I could never understand why everybody didn't do it that way, but they earned my respect from that point forward. I would come to the OSERS board with an open mind, simply to earn, learn the policies and practices. I would hope to be able to contribute based on my years of experience advising boards of a similar nature. I'll do my best, basically to help them effectively manage the overall program. I do look forward to the opportunity to serve the committee and the Omaha Public School System.
At this time, I entertain a motion. Typically, that motion comes from a committee member, a board member who is on that committee to approve any recommendations.
Submove.
Second?
It's a motion on the floor by Mr. Snow, second by Mrs. Fay. Any discussion? Mr. Scanlon.
I would like to increase the transparency of the selection process and have the top two vote-getters, according to this, Mr. Jones and Mr. Toth, be presented to the Board of Education and interviewed in, in a public, public format in order to increase the transparency, as I said before, and the reason for that is because we currently have over $400 million unfunded liability that is going to start drawing a lot of attention. And that, I think that in order to ensure that I have full faith in the, the recommendation by the Board of Trustees, I would like to hear from the top two voice vote-getters in that interview process.
We'll go Ms. Luanne, followed by Mrs. Fay.
I want to say that I appreciate the OSERS trustees moving forward toward a more transparent process in the selection of the business individual for the three-year term on the trustee board. There were three very qualified candidates that interviewed for the position. The two who received the most nominations have very different skill sets. Mr. Jones was a consultant to public pensions as an actuary and he showed that he has a working knowledge of investments and a direct experience, but he also showed that he would bring the actuarial technical skills to the board and has had experience working and observing Mr. Smith and Mr. Roger Ray. Mr. Toth has extensive investment management experience working with various asset classes, understands asset allocation, risk-adjusted returns, and has run two defined benefit plans in his past. The board has a significant responsibility to both the participants and the taxpayers of the plan to be good stewards of the assets of OSERS, and I believe that it would serve this board well to interview the two candidates who received the most nominations. I have now attended approximately 60 hours of OSERS meetings and I would say that about 90% of that time is spent receiving information on various investments and making decisions on where to allocate funds. The trustee board oversees the investments of $1.3 billion. I believe that it is imperative that this board consider the significant responsibility it has and seriously consider the importance of placing someone on the board who has a broad base of investment experience.
Mrs. Fay.
Well, thank you, Don and Dawn, for coming tonight. I really appreciate you taking your time on a Monday night to stick around here at 9 o'clock at night. And I want to thank Mrs. Scotting for bringing, helping to shepherd in a more transparent process for the selection of new OSERS trustees. This was something that, you know, we brought to all of you and as a plan that was put together collaboratively with the, the three board members who sit on OSERS and the trustees themselves, and you all approved it and I applaud you for being forward-thinking and adopting that plan because the quality of the candidates that we received was really outstanding and I think that there were some who didn't think we'd even get any applicants and we had three really highly qualified people who came and interviewed before the OSERS trustees. And it was very impressive to look through their resumes, which I know you all were provided, and to hear the, their answers to the questions and hear about why they wanted to serve on OSERS. And of course, you all were invited to that meeting and I know how busy everyone's schedules are, but I did just want to inform the public that the entire board was invited to that OSERS meeting and had the opportunity to address those candidates at that time if they were, if they were able to. So, I just, I really feel like we are taking a step in the right direction to have this more open process. That interview was done in, in an open meeting, sitting right out here, was attended by members of the public, and it, I think it's working. I think it's really working. I'm, you know, I'm very comfortable with the candidate that was put forward and I just, I think we're moving in a good direction on OSERS for providing transparency. So, I just want to thank you for being open to that, thank the OSERS trustees that are not board members for being open to a new process and I think it's probably something that we can replicate going forward as we select other, try and fill other openings as they arise.
Any other? Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought it was a great process as well that we got to interview all three candidates in a public and open session. The superintendent sits on the OSERS board as Ms. Scotting, Ms. Fay, and myself, and I, I think that having an OSERS board be open to a new change and a new process was a great step in the right direction. And I remember we always talked about eventually if we want to make tweaks, we can make tweaks later on down the road and I, I think it was a very well-vetted process and I strongly urge my colleagues to support the decision from the OSERS board. Thank you.
Any other comments? Right now, there's a motion on the floor by a committee member to approve the recommendation that is before us. I guess I'll jump in. I'm supporting the recommendation primarily because I think we started this process of changing the process back in July with the first conversation, August. We met, we confer with OSERS, we met and confirmed with all parties, OEA, everybody seemed to be involved in, in creating this process. I believe it was transparent because it was held in this room, it was open to the public. But I just think if we're going to continue to build trust among the district and trust among staff, a process that we agreed to, the process that yielded qualified candidates, and I just think I have to have faith in the process to make, because we agree to it, and that's why I'll be supporting the OSERS recommendation. Mr. Scanlon.
I would like the opportunity for further oversight by the Board of Education due to the fact that, cannot emphasize enough, $400 million unfunded liability and it's growing. The stock market is near record highs, yet our unfunded liability continues to, to grow. My understanding is that we had an investment in the Ukraine. That's pretty, I mean, that's a risky investment that I believe has failed due to political unrest in that area. So, I, I don't have 100% faith in the oversight that we have and I'd like more information on each candidate and to interview them and I guess I, I don't have full faith in our OSERS Board of Trustees because that unfunded liability continues to grow and, you know, I just, I'd like to have more oversight, more, more information on those two candidates in a public interview.
Well, I mean, there's a motion on the floor to approve. It could be a roll call vote and, and whether it passes or not, I mean, everybody can vote the way they want. I don't think what Mr. Scanlon is proposing is an amendment that is, if you would call it a friendly amendment, that the agreeers, other introducers would like to have. So, at this point, based on where we're at, I think it's a roll call vote. Looking around to see if anybody's withdrawing their motion, so any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Scotting?
No.
America?
Yes.
Scanlon?
No.
Snow?
Yes.
Underwood?
No.
Vargas?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Fay?
Yes.
It's 5I, 4O.
Motion carries. Welcome to the trustees' board. And we look for great things from you. Moving to I to B legislative positions, this is from a legislative committee, Mrs. Fay.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a lengthy draft of legislative positions that Mr. Ray put together based on, I think, two things, I think based on positions last year and NASB standing positions that you receive in your legislative booklet from NASB. I don't know that we're looking for any discussion about the particular positions this evening, but what the legislative committee, which is for the members of the public to know, Mr. Wayne, Mrs. Scotting, Ms. America, and myself, as well as staff and legal counsel, what we would like to know is how you'd like to proceed with this. We can, NASB Legislative Committee spends pretty much an entire day going through these standing positions, so for us to break them down right here and now would, is, is not an efficient use of time. If you would like to proceed with small group meetings to break down, I know we love small group meetings, to break down the legislative positions and provide feedback, we can do that. If you want to look through them on your own over the next couple of weeks and provide feedback to the committee, you can send your thoughts and your comments to Mr. Ray and he'll bring them on to the committee. We don't meet as a committee until a couple of weeks into January, so you've got a good solid three weeks to, to dive into them. So, I guess I'm looking for feedback from the board as to how you'd like to proceed with these legislative positions.
You just, I'll jump in. Our professional services, service, contracted services, I don't like to say lobbyist, couldn't be here tonight, but the, the reason there needs to be some guidance at our January 5th meeting is that this is the start of the biannual year and so the main fight is going to be budget, we always know that. But with 16 new senators?
Seventeen.
Seventeen new senators, I keep. Everything is up in the air from educational policy to, to everything and including, I mean, I can't just say everything. So, what, what we have to do as a board is really come up with some guiding principles or some guiding thoughts to, to bind our board in this district to what we believe to give authority to Mr. Evans and others to talk to legislators on our behalf, because as a board, you're still an individual board member. And as an individual board member, if you're asked on a topic, because there's many people here in Omaha who ask us topics and we speak, which I don't, which doesn't bother me, I still want to make sure we have an official board position that Mr. Evans can refer to, that our professional services can refer to, to make sure things are done. It's very, very important that we provide some guidance, especially with the amount of new senators that are down there. So, Evans, whenever Mr. Evans gets the call about a big issue, and this happens all the time, right? They'll get a big call about there's a bill floating through, we can't reconvene this board and put a position out. He needs to be able to say, you know, I know where this fits at and here's, here's where our board is, here's what, here's what this district is. So, one, it also, not only covers him, but it, but it strengthens where we are as a board. So, we have to, and there's going to be some issues around learning community and I know we took position by position, but that was the superintendent's recommendation. This board might have another position now or broaded principles. We, we just need to come up with some true guiding areas to give our staff the authority to make sure they can talk to senators on our behalf, because we just, we can't reconvene that quick. And this does set the two-year term for, for the link, for the legislature, so it's going to be a big year. So, we struggled with this in the legislative committee on what words and how to do it, but it's very important on that January 5th meeting, we have some, some guidance for Mr. Evans and our staff.
So, just to be clear, we don't meet unless you want us to, as a legislative team, to reschedule our meeting. We are not meeting before January 5th, but that's a conversation we can have. I just wanted to note that.
I know, it just popped in my head after you said that.
Okay.
But it's, it is very important, so I just can't stress that we, as a board, sit down, look at some past legislation that were introduced, look at what Nebraska Association of School Board's positions are, look at what we've put together as some kind of recommendations and, and when we come back on the 5th, be able to, in between now, provide staff with some feedback to tweak, particularly Mr. Ray, to tweak some of the language so we can talk at our legislative committee and when we come back on the 5th, we're ready to go and have some solid positions. So, any questions, thoughts, or concerns? Mrs. Underwood?
I just have two things. And not being on the legislative committee, I apologize for asking this, but are these all new positions or do we currently have positions on some of these?
Great question. The answer is last year, we did bill-specific.
That's right, that's right.
But they can be incorporated into broader, but we wanted to make sure the board gave that authority, not, not the legislative committee.
That makes sense. I, I guess to respond to Ms. Fay's question, I would not mind small group meetings. I think I would like a little time to just kind of hash through them and, like Mr. Wayne said, also look at the NASB standing positions concurrently and just think through them a little more. But I would be open to small group meetings as well to kind of hash through them, if that's helpful for the subcommittee, you know, before just giving comments to Mr. Ray.
And we can make sure that if you don't have a copy of the NASB standing positions, I'm sure they're on their website, but if you prefer a hard copy, I'm sure they'd be happy to send along some more.
Any other thoughts, comments on that? All right, moving on to resolution on opportunity schools. Mrs. Fay.
So, this resolution was brought to you all out of the legislative team, I brought it to them, and they agreed to advance it out for discussion by the board. And I just want to tell you from my perspective where this came from and I'm, and if anybody on the legislative team wants to, or on the staff who was there at that legislative team meeting wants to add any of their thoughts or comments, that's welcome. There's already been very public comment by newly-elected officials here in the state about where they will be going when it comes to school choice and possible legislation. So... are against, and that becomes what all of the conversation down in Lincoln is about. All of the testimony about a particular bill is very polarized and not very productive. So my own thinking has been, it's been a process, and two years ago, when Senator Adams first introduced his bill that was passed last year, that is, the Priority Schools Bill, I went down there and met with him and talked about it, and ended up writing an op-ed piece that was published in the World Herald, about really how I felt strongly about the importance of community buy-in and a lot of the things that we were talking about in the '75 North Howard Kennedy discussion, just really providing a way for there to be more ownership over the particular issues that surrounds some schools more than others, but really surround anything when you're talking about education and children, by the community. So I think that the idea that one school district doesn't have to have all the answers. And last year, while I know it was controversial decision, this board took a neutral position on the Senator Lautenbach's bill. And again, I know that ended up being a very controversial position, and I've had a lot of discussions with a lot of you about how that played out. And I've had conversations with Senator Lautenbach, or former Senator Lautenbach, about all of that. But I think I would probably do it again that way, because I think it was a step towards being able to have a conversation. Once you say, no, I'm opposed to this, no matter what, then you've effectively shut down any kind of conversation and any kind of opportunity for taking what's the best of each side and coming up with a compromise. So for me, this was an opportunity to articulate some of those best parts about providing innovative education for the various individualized needs of our students, and articulating it in a resolution for discussion by our board. After meeting with lots of community members about it, the unanimous, there was unanimous agreement that it needed to be called something other than a Charter Schools Resolution. So it was suggested to me that we plug in opportunity schools, you know, the word charter still is throughout the resolution. I mean, there's, there's a lot of language here that needs to be discussed, but I guess, so my first goal is to be proactive and to start a discussion here about what it is that we can agree on and support that may or may not come out of the legislature, understanding that everything that's in this resolution is currently available and legal under statute that we have now. There's, there's nothing here that requires any legislation that's in this resolution. But also to articulate to the district, and maybe this helps provide guidance for something like '75 North, to articulate to the district what it is that we would be in support of, the kinds of innovations specifically that we would be in support of. So those are really my two primary goals for bringing this forward to the board. I will say that the one, in my conversations with some board members, I've tried to reach out, well, have reached out to all of you and met and discussed this with many of you, most of you, and then met and discussed it with many school board members as well. There is one piece of potential legislation that we could or couldn't support if we decided to adopt a resolution like this, and that would be that if we were going to have really innovative schools who wanted to try something very different, that there may be the need for a waiver from some particular barriers that currently exist in statute or in NDE policy. So that would be something that would be a function of legislation, but just to do what's in this resolution is all now perfectly legal. So now I opened it up for discussion, and I'm interested in hearing your thoughts.
I'll jump in, I guess. The reason I was okay with this coming out of the committee was, I've never been afraid of the conversation. I think OPS has great programs. But I want to bring up something that was said in our public comment by Mr. Barney. I sat on this board for four years, and I watched Wilson Focus School close to be closed, and Mr. Barney lead a, I mean, a grassroots event and took people down to Lincoln and had hundreds of people coming to school board meetings, going to learning community meetings. Then I came on the board. I was on learning community right when things started changing as far as Wilson. Came on the board, and I've sat through three different superintendents, three different boards, but the same plan for Skinner Magnet School for three years. And what I struggle about Project 75, North 75 Project, is that Skinner program or replication of Wilson Focus School was organic in the community. Numerous surveys were done. The reason I was opposed to it the first time was primarily because it came out of the blue and I didn't understand everything. And I actually think I said during the meeting, which is recorded, that I wanted to come back, I just, I don't have enough information on it. I don't know what they're going to do with the extended day. And that's primarily because Nathan Hale, when we extended the day, we didn't have buy-in from all the staff, and we didn't quite know what we were going to do with it, and it shows in the results that we were having at the time at Nathan Hale, as a longer school day. There just wasn't intentional focus with those extra minutes that probably should have been planned out. But if we have community organizations or need, and I heard 2015, two times during the public comment, they're looking for an alternative. We asked as a board on March 3, November 2014, to give us an update on how we can expand Wilson Focus School in dual language. We heard dual language was a staffing issue and some things there. However, we opened it this year at Liberty, and that was asked to be at Skinner or Conestoga two years prior to that. We still haven't replicated Wilson Focus School, and we're going to take on another project with another school at higher affinity that we're designing a plan for. If we have something that works in our own backyard, it's time to replicate it. And if we're not going to, then we need to give the community the opportunity to replicate it itself. Because it's their school just as much as it is ours. So we have to have a serious conversation when it comes to '75 North, when it comes to opportunity schools. What are we really going to do about Wilson Focus School? I think it's kind of unfair not to replicate it when it's doing so well, and to bring another school on, a North Omaha school, and say we're going to do something different that's going to close the achievement gap. And that just makes all that we're doing at Wilson doesn't matter, because we're not replicating it throughout the entire system. And so I agree with Mr. Barney on this, that we can't wait anymore. We can't wait two more years to replicate things that are already working in the district. And if there's a staffing need, we got to have a conversation about how do we fix that. I don't have the answer, but Wilson Focus School should be replicated. And I remember seeing that plan three different times before this board, and it's not done. And so what I'm saying is, I don't want to be the barrier no more. I don't want this board to be the barrier no more. If the community wants to do that, and that's what they want to engage in at Skinner, I would like to see a plan presented. I would like to see an opportunity school come to existence, because that's what they want. So it's, I don't know how I feel exactly about the resolution that's before us, but I know there's a bigger issue around Skinner Magnet for me, because I've seen it come back to our board, or at least talked about it at our board multiple times, but not action yet. And it's not just Skinner. There are schools that are being opened around us that I think should be a part of us. If we had language like this, that school that's being opened in North Omaha may have came here, may have not, I don't know. But I at least like to have the opportunity to have that conversation. We spent an hour and a half talking about developing a plan-